All right. Good evening, everyone. We have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report out, so we will adjourn this special meeting at 6:03 PM. And now I will call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, August the 9th, 2023. It is 6:03 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, August 11th at 1:00 PM and Monday, August 14th at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meetings. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24. Pardon me. No individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to the Assistant City Clerk Brenda Heggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. Mayor and council, I also did just want to note from our meeting on July 26th, we did affirm an adherence to the city's written policy regarding third-party use of city video equipment at public meetings. For those items that are submitted as visual presentations, those would only be received if they are for specific matters that are listed on our agenda for that evening. They would not be available for the general public comment. Typically, what I would refer to is Section 5 of our agenda. Of course, any kind of materials that are submitted to myself as city clerk and they're asked to be submitted to the council, those still get distributed to the full city council and staff for viewing prior to the meeting. It's just a procedural change for us to kind of confirm adherence to the written policy that we have. With that, I will move to our roll call for the evening, and I'll start the roll call off with Councilmember Robles.
President.
Councilmember Brewer.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Sting Allen.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up Ms. Tina Vogt to help lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please, Clerk.
Under Section 3 for the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, with the first being Item 4.1, a presentation of a certificate of achievement to the IR Academy 2007 Under-16 Girls Soccer Team as the 2022-23 NorCal State Cup Champions.
All right, excellent. Would you like to come up, please? We invite you all?
Come on up.
All right. I'm going to read the City of Elk Grove Certificate of Achievement, and then we will come down and present that to you. And this is presented to the IR Academy 2007 U-16 Girls Soccer Team, the 2022-2023 NorCal State Cup Champions. On—yes, that's great. On behalf of the Elk Grove City Council, we are pleased to congratulate Elk Grove's IR Academy 2007 Under-16 Year Old Girls Soccer Team for winning the 2022-23 NorCal State Cup Championship. We are very proud of all of the hard work and dedication displayed by the coaches, team players, and parents. Congratulations. We're going to come down there and present this to you. Would one of you, or the team captain, or a coach, or anyone, would you like to say anything? You're invited up to the podium to say—
And I know Coach Zach and Coach Murso are here, so definitely come up and—
Come on up.
—one of you play Rochambeau and give a speech.
We would just like to thank the City of Elk Grove for allowing us to participate in soccer in the city and representing the City of Elk Grove. The players did a tremendous job this season. I couldn't be more proud of them, couldn't be more proud of the parents, and we're just happy to be here and thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to invite you up here because there's a number of you, and I think it's probably the easiest way to get everyone in a picture. So if you want to just cross there, yeah. And then I should go down and—
We look forward to seeing you all in the World Cup one day, defeating Sweden this time. Yeah.
Congratulations. There we go. All right, I'm going to sneak in back over there, pass this to one of you.
What's your guys' cheer? Do you guys have a cheer?
All right, there we go.
What's your guys' cheer? Do you guys have a cheer?
All right, there we go. All right, can we hear you guys' cheers?
Yeah.
One, two, three, IR! One, two, three, LE! One, two, three, PR!
That was great. All right. Next up is the proclamation recognizing the Diversity Awareness Month. And we would—let's see, did we have a—we have our members from our Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Would you please come forward? Thank you. And Councilmember Brewer will read the proclamation.
So I want to thank you all for coming today representing the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. As we know, that Diversity Awareness Month is here, starting today, going through September 9th, and the Multicultural Festival coming up on September the 9th as well. And so as we begin this month-long process, I'd like to read a couple of whereas's for the proclamation, and then I will come down and present it to all of you as we take our picture. But whereas, "The city and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission will celebrate Elk Grove's diversity through several events and activities during the months of August and September, and providing information, education, and communication facilitates a better understanding and appreciation of our differences. And events, forums, and exchanges in collaboration with organizations promotes peace and unity within our community. And the city and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission strive to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community in Elk Grove. And the city and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission invites residents to attend the Multicultural Festival celebrating diversity on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, over at District 56, 8230 Civic Center Drive." Now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims August 9th through September 9th, 2023 Diversity Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and encourages all businesses, entities, the media, and Elk Grove citizenry to participate in activities and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge and read the council's proclamation declaring Elk Grove as no place for hate, and to take time and to appreciate the diversity that exists within the City of Elk Grove. Signed on this day of August 9th, 2023."
All right. The floor is yours.
Evening. My name is Tina LeVoe, and I have the privilege of being the Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. And on behalf of the Commission, I just want to thank the mayor and the city council for your ongoing commitment to diversity and inclusion in our city. I always think about something that my mother used to say is that it doesn't matter if you talk the talk, if you don't walk the walk. And one of the things I've always been very proud of is how this city has always walked the walk when it comes to diversity and inclusion. And so thank you so much for your ongoing support. And we don't have a really cool cheer, but one of the things that we do always like to say is that Elk Grove is really no place for hate. And really, again, a city that's welcome to all. So thank you so much for your support. I'd like to go ahead and have each of our commission members just introduce themselves because I'm really grateful that they were here to join us tonight.
Great.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Michael Hale, really appreciate your guys' nomination and selection for this commission, and we appreciate your guys' recognition for what we're trying to do for the community.
Hi, Jessica Carter, and I have been on the commission for about five years now, so I think most of you guys know me. And thank you, Tina, for saying, I think, everything that needed to be said. That was great.
Thank you very much. You guys are the best example of our diversity, all, everybody. We are from different religions. That's what we have, our city over here in Elk Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will meet you down there. We just want to thank again our Diversity and Inclusion Commission. You do great work representing our diversity throughout the year with great programs and events. So thank you again for all of your commitment to our city. You want to say something? Sure.
No, I real—and also just to add on to what the mayor is saying, just knowing each of you and seeing you work in the community throughout the years is really an amazing testament and a commitment to the City of Elk Grove in showing how the city is the seventh-largest diverse community in the nation. But your commitment and time in working with us, working with other community leaders to foster this sort of unity in the community is highly, highly, highly commendable. And I definitely want to see you all continue to fulfill that mission because it's really needed at this time, especially given how we're trying to do what we can to bring everyone together and move forward in the spirit of unity. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and continue to do that good work for the City of Elk Grove.
All right, moving on to our next item, which is public comment. We will start with Mary Ann Simpson, followed by Kirk Thompson.
Okay, you might remember me from last meeting. My name is Mary Ann Simpson. I was here regarding the illegal fireworks. Even though things are being done regarding the illegal fireworks, the problem regarding the illegal fireworks just seems to be getting worse each year. Some members of the city live—leave town for the Fourth of July, but not everybody has that luxury. I am requesting that the city put this down as an agenda item. If it's possible that council can get the statistics regarding the code citations, the police and fire department reports, and Cal Fire reports regarding the Fourth of July, maybe council can talk with Sacramento County and Sacramento City to see how they're handling these matters. It would be great for the public to weigh in on the matters to resolve the issue. Maybe we need more police-fire personnel dedicated to catching those selling, distributing, and using illegal fireworks. Maybe we need a stronger fine, too. It's my understanding the citations here are only $500, opposed to Sacramento County, which is $5,000. No matter what, something needs to be done. Please put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kirk Thompson, and that will be our final public comment.
Hi. I'm here to rebut the defamatory statements made at the last meeting about me and other concerned parents in this community. First, the idea that because a group of parents are concerned about pornographic material being available in schools means queer people are not safe in the United States, in California, in Elk Grove, it's patently absurd. With the current spike in violent crime in major cities, Elk Grove might be the safest place for queer people in the whole freaking world, and no one wants queer people to be less safe. The person who accused me and other parents of doxing her and making her feel unsafe felt so unsafe about her LGBTQ advocacy that she hosted an all-ages drag story time at her business and felt safe enough to advertise the event on social media. Now, I am personally against doxing people, so I looked into the accusations to find out who did it and admonished the people responsible, if possible. All I found was someone reposting videos from the event, and from what I could tell, every child at the event was under the age of 12. So she felt safe enough to host a sexually explicit dance routine in front of a bunch of prepubescent kids without any legal repercussions. Strip clubs, bars, and casinos would love to feel that unsafe. Also, if you genuinely feel unsafe for exercising your First Amendment rights, do what most of my friends had to do years ago when they began participating in any sort of activism: exercise your Second Amendment rights. Moving on to the statement that my position kills students and increases rates of suicide. Well, I wish I had known 25 years ago that failure to have porn available in public schools led to teenage suicide. That would have been made for a great conversation with my high school principal. Seriously, though, the accusation that I want policies that lead to more suicide? My dad committed suicide. Accusing me of wanting anyone to get to the point where they think death is the only reprieve from their grief, or that I want any family member to have to pick up the pieces in the aftermath, is disgusting, and no one wants that for any queer person or their family. To say otherwise is nonsense. Now, I don't know if she realizes what it means when you say you feel unsafe, but when you feel physically unsafe, who do you call? You call the police. I think she was being honest, that this is not an issue the city council should be involved in. But directly or indirectly, I think she was saying she wanted you involved, chief. When you say you are not safe, that means that you want the police involved. Because of this, I have three questions for the chief of police. One, should I warn the parents who are against porn in schools that the police, local, county, state are watching us? Two, do I need to go home and tell my wife to be prepared for the police to show up to question me for thought crime? And three, if I do, can you do me two favors? Please, one, bring a warrant, and if you don't have a warrant, please knock. Even Stalin had to do, "See to knock."
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Thompson, if you're interested, please reach out to me via email. I would love to have a cup of coffee with you. Thank you. That concludes our public comments, so we will move on to our next item, which is our General Administration Information, the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Berman, City Manager, a few items to report on this evening. As the council is aware, a few months ago, several residents spoke at a city council meeting regarding concerns over the Historical Society's Civil War event. As an update to the general public, the city has helped facilitate meeting between the residents and the Historical Society this last week, as well as members of our Diversity and Inclusion Commission and members of our city council. There was a good, productive dialogue. There's lots of things that need to be followed up on, but the city is looking forward to continuing that and looking for a solution that works for all affected parties. Elk Grove Public Works team was awarded three Project of the Year awards recently from the American Public Works Association's Sacramento Chapter at a luncheon last Friday. In the award category of transportation, both the Grantline Road Widening Phase II and Arteria Roads Rehabilitation and Bike Lanes were recognized. The Studio Court and PD Campus Improvement Project was highlighted in the Structures Award category. Please join me in congratulating our Public Works team on these honors. Well done, Public Works. Our Disability Advisory Committee is now accepting nominations online for the 17th Annual Above and Beyond Awards through this Friday, August 11th. Introduced in 2007, the award recognizes individuals, businesses, and organizations that go above and beyond for individuals with disabilities in our community. The city council will recognize honorees during Disability Awareness Month in October. Visit the city's website to submit your nomination. The city continues with its Fridays in the Grove. Last Friday, we had a great turnout at Country in the Plaza, which is part of that series. We estimated about 200 guests, line danced the night away. Our next Friday in the Grove event returns to District 56 this next Friday, August 18th. Join us for a movie, "Under the Stars," around 8:00 PM. This month's film is the animated favorite, "Luca," and more details are on our website. Our barbecue in the beat continues coming up on Saturday, August 19th. This one will be at Amundson Park, which is on 8730 Heritage Hills Drive, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We're looking for volunteers to assist at the 11th Annual Elk Grove Multicultural Festival. The festival is scheduled on Saturday, September 9th, at District 56. Volunteers will help lead kids' activities, behind-the-scenes with the bands and dance groups, support the festival logistics team, and more. All volunteers will receive a free T-shirt, and high school students can earn community service credit. Tickets are now on sale for the Elk Grove Arts Commission's next production, "A Copa Club Afternoon," scheduled on Sunday, September 24th, from 3:00 to 5:30 PM at District 56. This cabaret-esque event will feature performances by Gary Mendoza, Carly Rhodes, Tracy Gay, Martin Beal, and Leslie Sandifer. Seatings limited, and general admission is $10 per person. Purchase your tickets in advance on Eventbrite. And finally, those of you that are looking for a new way to get your city news, the Public Affairs Team has launched the Elk Grove City Cast, a podcast exploring hot topics, sharing local happenings, and introducing some of the people making a difference in our community. Our third episode drops tomorrow, featuring an interview with Police Lieutenant Dan Templeton discussing the new community prosecutor program. Tune in for a new episode each month. You can find the Elk Grove City Cast on our website, just about anywhere you get your podcasts. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. I just wanted to also echo my sentiments for the meeting that we had regarding Civil War Days, and thank you, Cara, for your efforts in bringing the groups together and the series of meetings, just, you know, being a participant with Councilmember Brewer. It was fantastic. And at the end of the day, I know that we all want what's great best for our city, and everyone really understands, I think, after that meeting, the importance of being inclusive. So thank you for leading in those efforts. All right, with that, we will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, Item 8.1.
Good evening, Mayor Sting Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Council. Antonio Oblaw, Planning Manager, are here to present to you the Guardian Madera Apartments, Project Number PLNG 22-063. For this project, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and rezone for an approximately one-acre portion of the project site. Those would move the designation to the high-density residential designation and RD30 zoning. Along with that is requested a specific plan amendment for 12 acres of the site from High Density Residential 25 to High Density Residential 30, consistent with the existing zoning and general plan designations. In the further slides, I'll explain how those are kind of cleanup items. The bulk of the site is zoned for high-density residential, consistent with the project that's being proposed this evening. Along with those entitlements, a major design review is requested for a new multi-unit residential development. The project is located at the southwest corner of Poppy Ridge Road and Big Horn Boulevard. It is in the Laguna Ridge specific plan area. However, just across the street is our southeast planning area. This project was presented to the Planning Commission on July 20th. We did have three residents in attendance who spoke in opposition to the project. Some of the comments we heard were just generally in opposition to multifamily apartment development. Also, we heard about impacts to schools and parks, and also we heard about concerns with traffic on Poppy Ridge Road, especially with all the construction going on. As far as our response, the site has been identified for multi-unit residential development since 2004. Furthermore, based on the initial projections of development within Laguna Ridge, the actual buildout is fewer units than was originally planned. And also, there are future improvements to White Lock Parkway and to Poppy Ridge Road that will address some of the traffic concerns that came up during that meeting. After public testimony and hearing from staff and the applicant, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend that the city council approve this request by unanimous vote of 5 to 0. Just some follow-up information on the schools' concerns that came up. We did look up the capacity and enrollment information for the nearby elementary, middle schools, and high schools. Those schools, including Mewock Village, have available capacity of 174 students, Pinkerton with available capacity of over 350, and Kasimist Oaks with available capacity of over 300 students. You could see the student generation of the Guardian Madera Apartments. It will not exceed the capacity based on current enrollment. Furthermore, regarding the roadway improvements, we did hear concerns about kind of temporary closures along Poppy Ridge Road. That is due to construction that's going on there. We do have construction going on on Poppy Ridge for Beezer Homes and Tim Lewis. We expect those roadway improvements to be done likely later this year. When those are done, the full improvements for Poppy Ridge Road roadway, those will be complete, with the exception of the site that's before you tonight. The development team for the project tonight will complete those improvements all the way to Big Horn Boulevard, should they gain approval. Some background on the request tonight, there is a one-acre portion of the subject site that is zoned for single-family development. However, the history of that, that parcel was approved for residential lots through a tentative map back in 2007. However, in 2010, the Planning Commission approved modifications to the map and did condition the project to assign a multifamily designation to that one-acre portion. However, that rezone was never perfected, and that's why we're here before you tonight, kind of to reconcile those zoning changes. This will—the zoning changes before you tonight will perfect the Planning Commission direction dating back to 2010. Furthermore, in 2014, Parcel 2, which is the larger parcel, was added to the housing element to meet our regional housing needs, RENA obligations. element to meet our regional housing needs, RENA obligations. And that was in 2014. As far as the project before you tonight, it will be market-rate units, even though this is an affordable housing site. The city is required to make up those units within 180 days. Staff currently is in the process of investigating other sites that we can amend the zoning designations of to make up those 161 units. And we expect to be able to meet those obligations, to keep our RENA housing-available-site balance consistent with our housing element. Regarding the general plan amendment, you can see the one acre on the screen before you. That's currently low-density residential. That will be proposed for high-density residential, consistent with the remainder of the site. Furthermore, the specific plan amendment to the Laguna Ridge specific plan, it's existing low-density residential and open space, consistent with the adjacent parcel that will be rezoned to high-density residential, 30 units per acre, across the full site. And again, just to follow up, that one acre, as far as the zoning, will go from RD5, five units per acre, to RD30, which is the multifamily designation for 30 units per acre. The design component of this project, it does require a major design review for architecture and site layout. There are 324 units proposed. There are a total of 543 parking spaces proposed onsite, which is consistent with our parking requirements. That will be laid out in 11 residential buildings, and will include clubhouse facilities with indoor and outdoor amenities, a dog park, common open space, and site improvements, including the parking and landscaping. Based on staff's analysis, this project is consistent with general plan, zoning code, and our design guidelines. The site plan is on the screen before you. Again, this is at the corner of Poppy Ridge Road and Big Horn Boulevard. There is one vehicle entrance on Big Horn Boulevard with the apartment complex offices adjacent to the entrance on the north side at Poppy Ridge Road. And those are the vehicle entrances, and there will be pedestrian accesses into the facility on all sides of the perimeter. The elevations are on the screen before you. They're proposing a contemporary design. They did work with staff to ensure that the materials used complement the surrounding And you can see the renderings of what those will look like from the street, and also the main clubhouse office facility. Staff did conduct an environmental analysis on this project. We completed an addendum to the Laguna Ridge specific plan revised environmental impact report. Through that addendum, we determined that the project would not result in any conditions requiring further sequo analysis. It was determined that the project would not result in any impacts not recognized with the Laguna Ridge specific plan environmental impact report. So, before you tonight, we are forwarding Planning Commission's recommendation that the City Council adopt an addendum to the Laguna Ridge specific plan revised environmental impact report, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending the Elk Grove zoning map for the proposed project, and requesting to adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and major design review for the project, subject to the findings and conditions of approval included in the draft resolution. That concludes my presentation. Even though I'm presenting tonight, I'd like to thank Sarah Kersgesner, who did most of the work on this project. I'm available to answer any questions, should you have any, and the development team is here also.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open, and I will invite up the applicant to speak, if you are interested. Hello, Mr. Gillum.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jim Gillum from Gillum Consulting, representing Guardians on this project. Yep, you can open up. Having reviewed the staff report and the material attached to it, and sitting through the presentation by the Planning Department, we feel that the project's been well represented. So, we're not going to go through our entire presentation tonight. We will stand ready to answer any questions you have. But we did bring our entire team here to be resources, should there be questions that arise. And with that, I'm going to invite Brendan Leonard from Guardian Capital to speak to you about the company.
Thank you.
Good evening. Wanted to take a few minutes to share a little about us, so that you and the residents of Elk Grove know who their potential development partners are in building out the vision that the city has for the community. Guardian is a ground-up multifamily developer. Currently, we have about 1,800 units that are owned and managed that we built, with another 2,500 or so in the pipeline, some various stages of development. Our home base is in California, and the slide before you just shows some of our more recent multifamily projects. We have projects in Sacramento, Folsom, Vacaville, Tracy, Modesto, Reno, just to name a few. And we're also the builder and owner of the Vasari Apartments, which are on Sheldon Road, just west of 99 on the north side of town. Wanted to introduce ourselves and show a few of these projects to demonstrate three key points. The first is that we have the qualified experience with this type of proposal to do it right. This is our bread and butter. It's what we do. And we understand some more functional, challenging aspects of pulling something like this out of the ground. The second is our organizational capability, just we have, being able to bring the plan to fruition and build it out, the follow-through. And lastly, but most importantly, that all of what you see here that we've built, we keep, and we intend to keep forever. It's our mission to maintain these in the long run and own them. And I think that's an important point, to kind of demonstrate that we have a long-term commitment here. We're not trying to strike a deal and leave the hard work to somebody else. So, we're here for the long run, and that's why we wanted to highlight, you know, what we have going on here. So, there are just a few, in closing, just a few operational aspects to what we do that are not necessarily apparent in the zoning and the staff report side of things. You'll hear us say this a lot, that we're stewards of our communities, and that's both within the project boundaries and in the surrounding neighborhoods. And so, to demonstrate that, our first point of contact with our residents, if we are fortunate enough to be approved, and before we go to construction, we walk the neighborhoods and hand out all of our contact information for the onsite construction people, our onsite property managers, who will be there when the clubhouse is complete, and for us, the staff of Guardian, to ensure that if there's anything happening during the build-out of the project, that people know who to talk to. There's a face and a name, and we'll hold, you know, I don't want to call them community outreach meetings, but we'll be going around to all of the residents and talking to them. And our doors there will always be open for any issues that might come up. And then, since we own these projects in the long term, we do have our property managers who will be there, 24/7 staff, but the management offices are open during business hours, and we can talk more about maintenance or, you know, longer-term management of the site. We're there forever. So, we make sure that we have our maintenance staff, full-time, onsite, dealing with cleaning up the community and having landscape maintenance and things of that nature. So, I was, you got anything else?
Yeah. Happy to answer any questions you may have before public comment. Otherwise, we'd be happy to come back up, would appreciate the opportunity to provide any feedback on things we hear.
Okay.
And so, with that, any questions for me?
None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this, so I will close the public comment opportunity. And did you have any additional comments? We're good. All right. Then I will declare that the public hearing is now closed, and open it up for any questions or comments from council. I'll start to the left.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question for Mr. Leonard or Mr. Gillum. And thank you for touching upon the maintenance aspect, because what I've found, you know, a lot of times, you talk about these big apartment complexes, people worried about dilapidation over time. And so, maintenance is great to hear, but, you know, just, will you have funds set aside to, whether it's painting, or, you know, roof repairs, or that kind of, I mean, those kinds of things?
Yeah. So, the, you know, the business model for any commercial or residential multifamily operation is that they budget for a reserve fund, and then annual maintenance to avoid any serious deferred maintenance problems, right? So, they'll engage in a comprehensive program, just like they would at any of their other projects.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you very much. I mean, that, to me, is a big concern when you talk about multifamily projects. I appreciate that your intention is to be here for the long term, but we all recognize sometimes assets need to trade hands. But I appreciate that, as long as you're here, this will be a maintained property. And it's also good to know you already have a project in the city of Elk Grove, so you're not new to this community. So, appreciate you sharing that with us. I think, and that's all I have, Mr. Gillum. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
To me, this meets what we need in terms of our range of housing. And I'm glad to see all the amenities that they're providing. It isn't just some apartments in a little top lot. I think they've done a really good job to provide some really intriguing, or, I think, valuable amenities. I would definitely live here if I was renting an apartment myself. So, I'm happy to support this project.
Thank you.
And happy to make the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, I'd be happy to second that. And had the opportunity to meet with the applicants yesterday, maybe it was Monday. I think it was Monday. Sorry. And I do want to echo Councilman Suen's observation relative to the number of amenities that they have onsite. It really is, it really is a very nice development with many things for folks to do there, and so I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
Definitely agree with the comments made by Councilmember Suen and Vice Mayor Speace. But I think the more important part is when you see the project, when you see that the Guardian Apartments come into fruition, I think people will be really happy with what they see, because it fits within the scheme and the aesthetic of the neighborhood, of the Laguna Ridge neighborhood. Definitely fits within the specific plan. And one of the really good things that I really appreciate about this project is the degree of housing diversity that will be within the project itself. And it provides something for everybody, whether you are a single person living here, whether you have a family, whether you are, you're new to town, and you're in the process of getting into your home. This is a good place to actually live, and it's a good community to live, because you have all the amenities that you would want to have if you were in a master-planned community. This apartment complex as being built is well-done. I think, Brendan, you and your group ought to be commended for this, and commended for your outreach that you will be giving the neighbors, because I think the, whatever angst that is being felt or perceived, I think when you meet with the people, meet with the neighbors, show them what your plan is, I think it'll alleviate a lot of misconceptions. And it's, from my perspective, this is going to, especially with 324 units, two- and three-bedroom apartments in here, this is going to be a gold standard for what we're going to be wanting to see in apartments and for housing in Elk Grove for years to come. So, I want to thank you for investing in Elk Grove and coming in with another complex to really help make our community a brighter place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also had opportunity to speak to the applicant. I think this is a pretty great project, especially for young professionals and people who are trying to downscale. It's a really great opportunity, and the amenities that are provided here are pretty phenomenal. If I've heard correctly, there's a golf simulator, so I'm hoping I get one of those clickers, you know? Just messing. But it's a, this is a really unique opportunity for us as a city to have, because it provides options. And I think as a city that's growing, and that we're having a whole bunch of growth, this is something that's very vital, especially as the housing market continues to become more costly. So, this offers a different opportunity for other folks who can't, who want to come to Elk Grove but can't. This is what's needed. So, I'm pretty happy about that. And as well, it's a unique project, and as Councilmember Brewer alluded, that it's going to be a gold standard. And I think that Elk Grove is ready for something different, something new, and this is exactly what it's providing with. If I'm not miscorrecting, if I'm not miscorrected, there's EV charging stations that are going to be coming here. It's pretty much fully electrical, and you guys are stepping up. And so, thank you for that. Look forward to see many of other projects to come by, and hopefully, it will be the same standard, and I'm in full support as well, so.
All right. Thank you to my colleagues, who've all made excellent points. I had a great meeting also with the applicant, so thank you for that. And, you know, in hearing about the Planning Commission meeting and the minimal opposition, which is great to hear, and I think some of the comments from opposition were just, you know, general in nature and nothing really specific to the project. As it relates to school district and enrollment patterns, we have a wonderful partnership with Elk Grove Unified School District, where we mitigate some of those concerns at the onset. So, that's one of the reasons we have our two-by-twos with our different government agencies, so we can anticipate issues. And even if we don't anticipate them, if they do come up, we're able to troubleshoot a lot of those concerns. So, thank you for that. I love the diversity of your portfolio, great projects all over, so thank you. And I think this is an excellent project for our community. It's that sort of executive-level quality, so thank you for that. With that, I believe I heard a motion in a second, but we have a series of motions. So, we'll start with motion one, and I'll let you start with that, and we'll work our way down.
Sounds good. Oh, do you want?
Yeah, because we have three motions for this.
Yes. But do you want to call the vote for the first one? Because we have a first and a second.
So, you have a motion for that, so you were motion one, and we got a second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, you have to read it.
Motion two, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance approving a rezon for the Guardian Madera Apartments project, PLNG 22-063, cestra parcel numbers 132-0050-170 and 132-0050-171.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And motion three, to adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and major design review.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Next item, 9.1.
My name is Travis Kuhn, and I'm a senior civil engineer in the capital program. Tonight, we are asking you to consider, to receive information and consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Elk Grove and Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District regarding the Harvest Water Program. Before I present the MOU to you, staff from Regional SAN are going to deliver a presentation on the project. I'd like to introduce Mike Crooks, the Deputy Director of Regional SAN Operations, Kyle Fraser, Senior Civil Engineer and Harvest Water Project Manager, and Sarah Modest, the Public Outreach Team Lead from KMP Strategies.
They know already. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Mike Crooks, Deputy Director of Operations of Regional SAN, and also manager of the Harvest Water Capital Program Management Office.
of the Harvest Water Capital Program Management Office. So in addition to the MOU, I thought we'd come here today and give you a brief overview of the Harvest Water Program, although I'm sure you've heard of it before, and then also give you an idea where we're at with respect to the status of delivering the capital improvement projects that will build the facilities. So a little overview, and then we'll talk more specifically about one of the projects, which is a pipeline that'll be constructed within the city of Elk Grove. And then lastly, we'll touch on our public outreach plans and efforts. So Harvest Water is essentially a large water recycling program. It's been in the works for several years. Regional SAN has done a lot of work, planning and securing funding and more recently developing designs and will soon go into construction of the facilities that are needed to make this a reality. This program, when complete, will deliver up to 50,000 acre feet per year of recycled water to agricultural properties south of the city of Elk Grove. The growers in that region will use our water instead of pumping groundwater to irrigate their crops, so giving them a more sustainable supply of water and help the region in general in terms of sustainability for water supply. It'll also bring a number of ecological benefits, and those benefits have actually helped us secure a significant grant from the state of California, which will help make this program a reality. So this exhibit shows the various projects that'll make up the Harvest Water System. We start with a pumping station at, I have a hard time with the, with the new name. It used to be Sacramento Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's now the EcoWater Resource Recovery Facility. But it's a large wastewater facility on 3,000 acres just off of Franklin Boulevard at the north end of Elk Grove. I'm pretty sure you're all aware of that. So a pumping station, 105 million gallons per day capacity on the site. From there, we'll have a large 66-inch diameter pipeline leaving the plant, coming down Franklin Boulevard through the city of Elk Grove, making its way to the unincorporated area south of Elk Grove. In that area, we have a number, number of other pipeline packages that'll, that'll continue to construct pipelines. And then we'll have another project that'll construct the improvements on the growers' property that'll help us deliver water to their systems. These are five of the six projects that I just mentioned briefly. It doesn't include the, what we call the on-farm connection assemblies or improvements. But the pumping station and our four pipeline packages, this summarizes our schedule for going out to bid, for construction bids on these projects. It, it shows the middle project, Franklin Essinger, that's just south of the city of Elk Grove. We actually completed bidding that, that project. We received a number of good competitive bids, which we were really, very happy about. We have a second project that's on the street right now, and that's the last one listed, called the West Pipelines. We'll be receiving bids for that in September, and the other projects will follow as the date show. So now, we're going to get more into the project that is within the city of Elk Grove itself. We refer to this as the Elk Grove Transmission Pipeline Project. Got with us today Scott, or I'm sorry, Kyle Frazier. He's going to be the project manager on this particular project and he'll go through some of the details.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Again, I'm Kyle Frazier, Regional SAN. I am the project manager for the Elk Grove Construction Project. We've been working on this for a couple of years now, closely with public work staff. So I want to acknowledge them for a lot of good work, helping us develop this project through design, and we're getting close towards the end. So, the project, as Mike said, starts at the EcoWater Resource Recovery Facility, 66-inch diameter pipe, so that's five and a half feet wide. It's a big pipe. In terms of the, the depth of the trench we need to construct, it's about 10 feet deep, so you can kind of envision that it's a, you know, not a 12-inch water line. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty big pipeline that we need to get down Elk Grove Boulevard so we can get that water out to our service area. So, the way we envision the construction happening is kind of in these phases, and so the first phase is more or less in the circled area here, so it's kind of a one-mile chunk where we would be doing that work. And then we would, once that work is complete, we'd move down to the next chunk of work, roughly from Laguna to Elk Grove Boulevard. Those two areas are probably the most significant in terms of impacts to the, to the city, traffic and businesses and whatnot. And then as we'll move on, we'll move down to the, the other two phases of the project and finish off as we get down into Franklin Boulevard, South of Elk Grove Boulevard. At that point, we've got, we're going to be out of the roadway, off into a, an area of undeveloped land behind the existing landscape. And then, once we get through White Lock Parkway, we will be off over on the side of White Lock and continue on down until we reach our connection point with the Franklin Essinger Pipeline Project, which is just south of the city of Elk Grove. So... So in terms of the, the project components, and some of these will be covered are in the MOU, so we'll be providing recycled water to the city of Elk Grove, East Franklin, Laguna Ridge and the southeast policy area. So those areas, they'll, they'll have recycled water available. When we do the restoration of Franklin Boulevard, we're going to extend the Class IV bike lanes from Big Horn on down to Elk Grove Boulevard. So we've been working with city staff and they're going to provide us the striping plans that when we do our restoration, we'll have that in place. And we will, we have an arborist report that we're going to put together to look at any trees that are impacted. We have been able to select the alignment in such a way that we've been able to avoid, I think, most of the, of the trees that are of significant concern. And we have been working with the Camera Road Project, which is technically a little bit south of the city of Elk Grove, but we've been working with those designers to make sure that our pertinences and our pipelines and do not have any, any conflicts with that, with that future project. And so, and then lastly, we have the, the traffic control is probably the, one of the biggest challenges in this project. And so, we've been working real close with the public work staff to refine our approach and develop, I think, a, a plan that is going to work for our project, work for the public as best we can. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sarah to touch on our public outreach efforts.
All right. So as Kyle mentioned, this is a publicly impactful project. We understand that, the district understands that, and the Harvest Team's really focused on making sure that your constituents understand the project is coming and what to expect in their roadways as they move about your community. So, we have a pretty robust public outreach plan in place. We've already started with a dedicated project website. We have a dedicated phone number and email address. I'll share that in a moment. So people can email us, call with questions, we can respond to people in language. And we want to make sure that these resources are available so that we are not using the phone tree method of communicating where they're reaching out to you and then it filters to us, right? We want to be able to get back to people really quickly. So that will be, it's in place now and it will remain in place through construction. Some of the other items here are kind of the highlights of what we'll be providing. This is program-wide, but obviously also within the Elk Grove Pipeline Project area. Shortly, your residents with, will receive an update and an invite those along their project alignment to a public meeting on October 2nd at the Laguna Town Hall. So it'll be a great opportunity for those who are interested to learn more about the project, ask questions as it relates to them. And we've been working with Kristin and her team to make sure that we're getting information out in your e-newsletter, so there'll be some information about Harvest Water in the September, October issue. And we're going to utilize a lot of the great communication tools that you already have established with your community in addition to what our team will be providing. As I mentioned, there's dedicated contact information shown here, and it's also going to be in the newsletter that goes to every single household in your community. We'll be mailing postcards in advance of the public meeting. And we will continue to communicate with those along the alignment before and during construction. We understand that there are some communities that are one way in, one way out. We're going to work with those neighborhood associations and communities, have signage and additional notifications so that they can plan for that time as well. So I'm here to assure you that public outreach is really important. We understand this is publicly impactful and we're going to continue working with your staff and the Regional SAN staff to make sure that we can minimize impacts as much as possible. But this is construction and it will be impactful, but hopefully not surprising. Thanks.
So I want to thank the Regional SAN staff for their presentation. As they've mentioned and as it's explained, the Harvest Water Elk Grove Transmission Pipeline Project, it's a large project that will have some unavoidable impacts during construction. The city has, the city's efforts to minimize these projects' impacts have been twofold. One is feedback during design meetings. City staff has been meeting with the district for well over a year, about once every two weeks for design review meetings, giving them feedback. And the second is the MOU. Our, our focus has been with public safety, traffic control, public outreach, tree preservation and restoration and striping requirements. And the MOU formally defines roles and responsibilities pertaining to the design and construction of the project. So the, we've already mitigated a couple of impacts during design through feedback and working with the district with, with the design. One is in regards to the traffic control and public safety. We've, they've revised the alignment on Franklin Boulevard to allow more room for construction and to get traffic further away from the open trench. Traffic won't be as close to the open trench and the heavy equipment, there's going to be some pretty heavy equipment there. And also, we've mitigated some tree loss. The revised alignment on Willard Parkway saves over 100 trees in the median. I want to thank Regional SAN staff for their work on that. Took a lot of coordination with utilities to move that alignment. They didn't have a whole lot of space to make it work. So the MOU, the main goals of the MOU are to minimize impacts on residents, protect city property and provide benefits to the city. The key requirements are in the MOU are the city will review all design submittals. They'll review all the submittals and sign and approve the final set of the plans and specifications. The district must submit an arborist report, as they mentioned, in accordance with Chapter 19.12 of the municipal code. And the other key requirements are public outreach, paving and restoration and compensation and fees. And I'll go into more detail on those in the next slides. So public outreach, we required a public engagement meeting in the MOU, and that's already been scheduled, as Sarah mentioned, on October 2nd. We've also recommended additional targeted meetings that she mentioned. There's an apartment complex and a golf course which have limited access. Notice required, we have specified notices required after the award of the construction contract. Notices will be sent to owners and tenants within a quarter mile of the project. Notices during construction, residents, schools, businesses will be notified of road closures and parking restrictions in accordance with the city construction standards. And the project website will be updated weekly with current project status and schedule, and the website will include 24-hour hotline to receive public comments. The paving and restoration requirements in the MOU are first to restore all disturbed, city-owned facilities to working existing conditions or better. This includes pavement, irrigation, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Restriping will include the Class IV bikeways cycle track that are planned for in two future CIP projects. The two projects are WHAM 19, which is the Franklin Boulevard Cycle Track, Elk Grove Boulevard to Laguna Boulevard, and WTR 83, North Laguna Creek Area, Big Horn Boulevard and Franklin Boulevard Improvements. Since we already know we have these projects planned, as opposed to restriping the road and then go back and doing it again, we want to implement it here. The MOU requires the district to pay, to pay $50,000 in fees for services provided by the city through the award of the project's construction contract. The initial payment is due within one month of the MOU execution. Services provided by the city through the award include administrative review, meeting attendance, drafting and executing this MOU, plan review, consultant plan review services and consultant coordination services during design and advertisement of the project. There's an encroachment permit drawdown account. A $100,000 initial deposit will be due within one month of the award of construction, and it will be replenished when that balance decreases to $10,000. The account pays for a city inspector assigned to the project and approximately eight hours per month for the city encroachment permit coordinator. And with that, take any questions?
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody signed up, I'll close the public comment opportunity.
I think we do have one member signed up.
Did I? I don't, oh, there we go, sorry. There wasn't one a minute ago. Thank you, Stacy.
You're welcome. Never done this kind of, end of it before. I just have a question for him, so.
Yeah, yeah.
For construction, we've had cats stuck in the drains. I've called the city, I've called everybody. Who do we call if they're stuck in your drains?
Hi, let me introduce myself. I'm Jeff Warner, I'm the Public Works Director. So, this, this project is for recycled water. It doesn't have to do with storm drains, but you can certainly talk to the Public Works Department. I'd be happy to have, to meet with you.
Everyone denied me, so I ended up having to go through Tykert and the homing building, construction crew, fire department.
Yeah, no, let me, let me, let me get, let me pull you aside and we'll get together and I'll, I'll let you know how to, how to get ahold of somebody.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our last speaker. Thank you. I will close the public comment opportunity at this time. And I have a quick question before I turn to my council colleagues. On the outreach plan, I would encourage also to send information to the school district so that they can share it with parents. It may impact, you know, travel to and from school, so definitely include them in that outreach. And then our, the Elk Grove Citizen, and then there is Laguna Farms, just to name additional that, that have high readership, that's also available to you as well. So thank you. I will start with my right. Any questions or comments? Councilmembers Robles?
Not so much questions. Thank you for the presentation. This is something that's definitely needed in Elk Grove and it's going to be used in the Seaplane area, so pretty excited for that. I, I know, I see it's pretty exciting, I think it's pretty fascinating. Other folks will just see construction, so it's definitely needed. I, I do want to say, I want to shout out the Regional SAN because I receive every mailer that, that's sent out and every notice. So I do actually look at my mail and I'm like, okay, I serve as the director on this board, so I definitely understand what it is. So thank you for that outreach. I'm looking forward to seeing more so I can scan on the code and all that. I know that we're looking at different areas as far as also having community meetings, correct? Laguna Town Hall is a good area, but I think we should also probably look at doing something in, on kind of Elk Grove and Franklin Boulevard side so some of the residents can understand, because a lot of folks do take their kids to Franklin High School or Helen Carr, and they, they do take that Franklin down on that, on the road. But other than that, looking forward to seeing this and please don't hesitate to reach out if any help is needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
No, great report. As we're starting to make steps to make sure that we, we have the infrastructure that we need as the city begins to expand and grow southbound, it's important that we, that we have the Harvest Water Program in place and installing the, the pipe that we need for, for all of our, for all of our needs and purposes. So I want to thank you for that and I definitely would like to adopt the resolution when the time comes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sueon?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions. First, well, yeah, I'll start with the questions. It's nice to work with you again, Sarah. So how long for each segment do you anticipate under construction?
Shall I go back to the?
Sure. You went up there, where you had each package. One was north of Laguna Boulevard, the other was between Laguna and Elk Grove, and the other was down from Elk Grove to?
Yes, that one.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, let's go through these.
And I think if you advance, yeah, it should light them up.
Yes. Okay, so, one thing I'd... Yes. Okay, so one thing I did, I forget to mention when I was up here. These arrows are trenchless work, so these are areas where we're going to be tunneling underneath. So Laguna Boulevard east-west and Elk Grove Boulevard east-west traffic should be largely unimpacted as construction. The rest of it will be open cut, but in those areas, they'll obviously be tunneling underneath there, so there'd be less impact to, to traffic. So in terms of how long it takes to do each one of these red circles, it's roughly about six months.
Six months, okay.
So you add them up altogether and you get about two years of construction. So that's, and that's in line with what we're expecting to start construction next year, finish at the end of '25, and hopefully be buttoning everything up and starting up the system in early '26.
Okay, great. And then as, in terms of the alignment, where, where in the road is it relative to the center line? Or, and how much, you know, how much lane are you disturbing of the lanes?
So the, the trench is about one, is about 10-foot wide, so it's about an entire lane.
Yeah.
And so working with city staff, we did come up with an alignment and we are kind of at the mercy of utilities, right? There's, there's plenty of storm drains and fiber optic and water and sewer. But for the most part, I think we're able to get ourselves in the center lane of northbound Franklin. So that was, that was what I think Travis was talking about when it allowed us to optimize our impacts to reduction in trees. So we're able to get as far as away as we could from the drip line of those big trees that are on both sides, are in the median and on the side of Franklin. So for the most part, it's down that, that center lane.
So it sounds like you'll be able to maintain one lane of traffic each direction during construction?
We are, the, the way we're approaching the construction right now, we think it's, it's safer and less impactful overall if we just close the entire northbound side of Franklin and put both lanes of traffic over on the other side.
On the side?
That, yeah. So that gives a lot more space for the, for the contractor to work and keeps the public farther away from the construction activities.
Okay, but bottom line, one lane of traffic.
Yes, so just to be clear, both northbound and southbound will be shifted to the southbound side of the road.
I understand. So that you, but at least there's one lane in each direction, so it's not entirely shut down.
You have it going to full closure. That was?
Yeah, that was my, that was my question. And then just, just, you, you kind of touched on it, disturbance to other utilities in there. So it sounds like you're able to avoid shutting, having to close down any water mains for any period of time?
We're working closely with Sacramento Water Agency to make, maintain water service. There are probably some areas where we may have to do some minor relocations, but we don't expect any service disruptions from that work.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. That's what I was wondering.
Okay.
Good questions.
Yeah, and I, thank you. And so just quickly, I mean, I, I too think, I mean, this is a great project. If those of you, we've talked about it before with the regional sand reports out, but you know, for the rest of the city, please go look at the Harvest Water project, being able to recharge groundwater in the South County as well as supply. A lot of our city with non-potable water in our landscaped areas, from the East Franklin to the Laguna Ridge to the Southeast Policy Area, that's a lot of water use in our medians and our parks and things that, that we, where we can save potable water for the rest of, of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I wish you would have stayed there so you can just shake your head, I guess.
Okay, come back up. Sorry.
Okay, so I'm understanding that the northbound lanes both will get shut down, get diverted off to the southbound lanes, and then two lanes, or one lane in each direction, right? So my question is, do you intend to close that entire segment at once? Or will you be closing portions of that segment along the way?
The plan right now is to close approximately the one-mile segment. So say from Sims Road down to Laguna Boulevard would be closed on northbound Franklin. We would finish that work, then we would pick up the whole operation and work on the next segment down, which would be?
So they'd, they'd essentially divert in the intersections, I guess?
Yes. Yeah, so we'd have traffic kind of diverting over at the intersections and freeing up the side, the northbound side for us to do our work.
Are there instances other than, gosh, right by the golf course and there's a development to the north and another that I think are only, there's some that are right out. Only right out. So like the golf course is right out only?
Yes.
St. Augustine to the north is right out only? So if you shut down that segment, how's that going to work out?
So there'll be a temporary signal so that traffic can get in and out of that, of that area.
Okay.
Because there are areas that are landlocked.
Sure.
So when the construction actually gets there, we're still working on exactly how to do that, but we can do it in phases. We can do it at night. This is where maybe some of our public input's going to be helpful to see which way is, is best for the community. But we're not going to landlock any of the existing.
Yeah, because my concern, and I can't think any of the, off the top of my head, but that northern segment, I'm trying to think of any right outs, but just be, be mindful of those because I'm sure those will cause sincere aggravation to that, those folks most.
There will be times when we will probably need to close down some of those minor roads that connect to Franklin and divert traffic out to Big Horn or other.
In the instance that there's a second exit, of course.
Right, right, yeah. Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good questions from my colleagues. I think I shared with you for, in terms of the outreach, just some additional sources. And then, you know, of course, I'm concerned about mitigating the traffic congestion and ensuring that we have, you know, flow of traffic. So it's, you know, it sounds like you're working on that and sort of troubleshooting on the best ways to navigate through that. So thank you. Great project. Think this will be great in the long run. It will be inconvenient for, for residents for, for the short term, but the long-term benefits are great. So thank you. With that, I will look for a motion.
To a move?
Second.
To adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Elk Grove and Region Sand regarding the Harvest Water Program.
All right, I heard a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right.
Councilman Suen, I wanted you to get, you know, I know you've been working really hard on this, so.
Everybody has. There's a whole big regional board.
I know, but I call you the water guy, so.
Thanks.
Or sanitation, I don't know. Well, yeah. Thank you, though. Thank you for all the work. All right, so we are now on to item 9.2.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Jan Glick. I was the project manager for Citygate's staffing study of the Elk Grove Animal Shelter for the Police Department, Elk Grove Police Department. And I'm here tonight to give you a report on that study. So my objectives tonight are to review the report with you, give you a general overview, go through the project process that we undertook, give you a staffing discussion, and then go over the key findings and recommendations. We'll have a discussion of the recommendations and then time for questions. We had 17 key findings and we had 21 action item recommendations included in the report. We, we did feel that Elk Grove Animal Services is following best practices and is progressive and appropriate in its provision of animal care and control services. Staffing needs were identified in all departments of the animal shelter. We recommended a five-year phasing plan for adding staff, and the greatest need for staff was identified to be in the animal care department. The fiscal processes were generally conforming to best practices. Our fiscal specialist is pretty detailed, so he came up with a few recommendations, but overall, he sees it as a good use of best practices. So the Elk Grove Animal Shelter provides full animal care and control services. These include sheltering, adoptions, and redemptions, pet licensing for both dogs and cats, veterinary care for sheltered animals, full services 24/7 for field services, volunteer and foster care programs, and public vaccine, microchipping, and spade neuter clinics. The new shelter and full services began in October of 2019. As we all know, this was shortly before the onset of COVID-19 in March of 2020, which affected operations in animal shelters in California and all over the country. The overall thing that we saw was we saw a decrease in numbers of animals coming in. We saw reduced public interactions. Many shelters closed to the public or were open only by invitation or by appointment. There were hiatuses of most volunteer programs. Volunteers weren't in the shelters. And we saw an increase in animal adoptions and interest in fostering. So the benefits to the shelters were, the shelters became much less crowded. They were almost empty at times. And so that was something that we saw throughout California, and we saw it here in Elk Grove, and we've seen it throughout the United States. But once the pandemic began to subside, many in the animal care industry were concerned that the pendulum was going to swing back the other way, and indeed it did. So, you know, the fear was that people would have to go back to work. They would have to return their foster animals. Some adopters might even have to return animals they adopted. Intakes would go up, and, and that is indeed what happened. And here in Elk Grove, while the staff during the pandemic was able to cover the needs of the animals in the shelter, once the pandemic effects started to subside, they were no longer able to do that with the current staffing level. As far as Citygate's observations of the Elk Grove Animal Service team, we see the leadership as being very committed, very high-functioning, dedicated to customer service, dedicated to animal welfare, and dedicated to saving animal lives. You have a competent manager with professional certification. You have a very strong and resilient team who are currently fatigued due to the increased number of animal intakes, probably longer lengths of stay for animals, increased client traffic, and expanded operations. That said, your Elk Grove Animal Services still provides a comprehensive animal care and control program to the City of Elk Grove. So our process, as we did our review, we almost always initiate our projects with a meeting with the leadership team or whoever's going to be the project team. And we did that with a teleconference kickoff meeting. And then Citygate requested a number of documents and a lot of data, quite a bit of information prior to our site visit, which was in December of last year. And I, I did the site visit. We did interviews with the leadership team. Some of your people even came in on their day off to meet, meet with me when I was on site. And then we went into a review and analysis of staffing, your organizational charts, the scheduling, and best project, best practices. Our next step in the project was a mid-project briefing. This is where we meet with the entity that we're reviewing and try to ensure that we're on track with our project before we start writing our report. And then once we have had that mid-project briefing and agreement, or maybe even some redirection if needed, on, on the way we're going, we begin to do the draft report. The draft report is then submitted to the city for their feedback. And we got quite a bit of, of feedback from the city. And then the final report and the presentation are the last steps in the process. So our report components start off with the executive summary. And then the next section is on current animal services provided by Elk Grove Animal Shelter. Section two, staffing needs and best practices. The analysis of staffing resources and organizational charts. We went into best practices and efficiencies, fiscal considerations, meeting desired outcomes, including the, the goals that the department has and the performance measures. We did undertake one comparison agency. And then the section on findings and our section on recommendations is the end of the report with 14 tables that include statistics, live release rates, phasing recommendations for adding staff, the fiscal activity and the performance measurements, and then 14 figures including graphs of animal intake, days of care, org charts, and fiscal data. So the current staffing at the animal shelter is 27 FTEs. Citygate found that the greatest need is for additional staff in the animal care department. As I mentioned earlier, the COVID-19 effects, having gone away and the increased intakes and longer length of stay requires more staffing for animal care. The Animal Services Department, which is the field department, has historically had a high vacancy rate. So we saw a prioritization needed for filling those vacancies. And we also recommend addition of staff to the customer service department to increase their efficiency. We recommend veterinary care goals being better met with more staff. And the volunteer program, events coordinator, coordination, and outreach duties are currently being done by one staff member. We feel that should be split and volunteer should be one job and events coordination and outreach be another. So that was another recommendation. As we reviewed the scheduling, we feel like the scheduling is done effectively. So in a summary of the position needs, Citygate was recommending animal care, basically adding four positions with two animal care assistant, one animal care specialist, and one animal care senior to focus on behavior. For the animal services, the field services, we recommend filling the current vacancies and down the line, looking at adding two animal services officers. For customer service, we recommend adding one customer service specialist. In the veterinary department, we recommend the addition of one RVT, Registered Veterinary Technician, and one veterinary assistant. And in the volunteer program, as I mentioned, adding a coordinator, a second coordinator, and splitting the duties. So in summary, that is a total of 10 staff increase recommending, recommended. And due to budget concerns and the amount of changes this would bring on, we recommend that those phasing be done over five years. So this next slide goes through the phasing recommendations. So for fiscal year '23-'24, which is the year we're in now, we recommended adding two animal care assistants and one animal care specialist position. It's Citygate's understanding that those positions were added to the budget for this current year. For the next year, we're recommending adding the two veterinary support positions, the RVT and the veterinary assistant. For the following year of '25-'26, we're recommending that the volunteer and events coordinator position be added and also that the customer service specialist be added. And then for '26-'27, the addition of one animal care senior. That would be focused on behavior. And also in '26-'27, addition of one animal services officer. And then the final recommendation for '27-'28, add one additional animal services officer. add one additional animal services officer. We also recommend that, over the years, each year, you watch how the animal population is coming as far as your intake statistics, your length of stay, and evaluate whether additional animal care positions are needed to properly care for the animals. Additional recommendations that we had regarded using part-time employees, which I think hasn't been the practice, that if you are able to bring in part-time for coverage in animal care, veterinary care, and customer service, that will help backfill for temporary absences or until regular full-time employees could be hired. And filling all existing vacancies, which I know has been a focus of the department, especially your animal services officer positions, would be a recommendation. We were very pleased to see that Elk Grove Animal Shelter is employing many of the best practices currently in humane animal care. So examples that we found of best practices that they have in place are a comprehensive policy and procedure manual that is regularly updated and solicits staff input. That they do manage intake for owned animals. They offer a low fee spay and neuter services. You have well-equipped animal services officers and active foster care program. You have public vaccination licensing and microchip clinics and a good capacity to provide veterinary care. You also have a well-organized volunteer program. The shelter practices fear-free techniques. They have collaborative relationships with partners. There is a community cats program and a trap neuter release program in place. There are strategies for reducing length of stay. You have good accessible business hours for the public, and you have a beautiful, well-designed physical plant. So additional operational recommendations that Citygate made was that your vaccination, microchipping, and licensing clinics be held on-site and that you charge fees for those services, except for microchips. I think historically, microchipping and the vaccines have been free, so this could be a little bit of a revenue enhancement in offering licensing clinics more often and on a regular schedule to try to build that relationship with the public. For fiscal considerations, your budget expenditures, and these evaluations were done over the 2223 fiscal year, but when the review was done was in February. So we did not have the final numbers of what you're, how you ended up in the last fiscal year. But the budgeted expenditures for 2223 were budgeted at 4.85 million. Revenues were expected to be about 312,000. And so the general fund subsidy is 4.5 million. Due to conservative budgeting practices, the actual year-end subsidy could be lower, and I believe historically it has been at the animal shelter. We saw a trend that fiscal year 23 was looking to show an increase in overtime usage. And it is most likely due to the vacancies and use of sick leave. And sick leave was actually up in spite of lessening impacts of COVID-19, potentially due to stress levels of staff because of being understaffed. And filling vacancies and staffing new positions should result in reductions of overtime and reductions in staff burnout. So the fiscal recommendations included scheduling for customer service personnel to be revised to ensure adequate coverage and separation of duties. Elk Grove Animal Shelter should offer a two-year license option. This is pretty common in California and could result in enhanced revenues and also more convenience for the animal owners. And Elk Grove needs to formalize and document the fee waiver process. And actually, it's our understanding that's already been done. So some of the recommendations have already been implemented. We also recommend developing a report to identify journal entries and assess error rates and whether there's a productivity loss and determine whether additional training would be needed. And to strengthen internal control, a way to monitor the, what are known as fix-it tickets that are issued by the animal services officers, just to tighten up and be sure there's no potential fiscal challenges with those. To maximize collections, we recommend that the animal shelter work with the finance department to develop a follow-up process for outstanding receivables and consider charging for some or all of the services provided in the public clinics, as I mentioned earlier. In regard to the goals and objectives, these are the Elk Grove Animal Shelter's goals: to maintain a high live release rate of 90% and reunite pets with their families; to increase licensing compliance from 10% to 30%; and to provide low-cost spay and neuter service to the public, which they are already doing. As far as results, the goal of the 90% live release rate has been met in most quarters and annually in the past five fiscal years. The goal of providing low-cost spay and neuter services is being met as the public program began in September of 2022. And the goal of licensing compliance being raised to 30% has not been met yet, but we have some suggestions in the report on that. We also detailed many other methods that the city could employ to increase animal licensing and some suggested sample programs to review and see if we might want to mirror some of those. We feel that a crucial component for the increased licensing would be increased staffing, especially with the animal services officers, with the boots on the ground in the community, making, bringing licensing to a priority out in the city. And we have two recommendations related to licensing and collaboration with the veterinary community. So we did recommend implementing an outreach program, taking a multi-pronged approach, and increasing, and this will result in increasing pet owner responsibility as well as compliance with licensing. And the collaboration with the veterinary community relates to increasing communication with the veterinary community and trying to encourage their provision of rabies certificates, which is actually in your local ordinance, but not all the vets are currently doing it. So these are the performance metrics, and these are the results. So you can see the live release rate is meeting the goal. On the strays returned in the field, we don't believe that one's being tracked. We're pretty sure that there's more than 0% that are being returned in the field, but there hasn't been a way to track it. As far as dogs returned to owner, you can see that it exceeds in all of the categories there. Animals spayed and neutered greatly exceeding the goal. The quarterly goal being 50, the annual goal being 200. It's been greatly exceeded. Animals vaccinated and microchipped also greatly exceeded. And community cats, trapped, neutered, and released, also meeting the goals. So it's good news on the performance metrics. Really good news. So in conclusion, you've got a very professional, knowledgeable, resilient, and dedicated team. And best practices are in place. Increased animal intakes have resulted in staffing deficiencies. We're so pleased that we've already started to address that issue. The 10 additional staff positions recommended, now there's only seven left because three have already been implemented. And we've been honored to do this study for the city. So thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you again for your presentation. We'll get to questions perhaps after public comment. So thank you. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Yes?
Sarah has a separate presentation.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Hold on the public comment.
Hi. Good evening. Yeah, sorry, I won't take too long and no formal PowerPoint. So I just want to touch on a couple of things. One, I want to thank Jan and Citygate for doing a great study for us and giving us a good roadmap. I did want to touch on some of the things, you know, in the report, you'll see that when Jan visited the shelter and interviewed us, we probably had about six vacancies at the time. And that certainly had an impact on staff morale and some of the comments that you might see in the report. People were very tired and stressed. But since that time, we have closed the gap, and we only have two vacancies remaining from those original vacancies. And that will be filled by September 11th. We currently have recruitments out for the three new animal care positions. And we are also currently in the process of hiring part-time veterinary support staff to help mitigate some of their workload as well. I also want to touch on a couple of the things that were said at the last meeting. Last week, I know that the Director of Sacramento County Animal Shelter came to speak in support of Elk Grove Animal Services, and she made the comment that we need a community cat program. And I want to clarify that we do have a community cat program currently in the shelter. Our TNR efforts that we offer twice a week are part of that program. And also included in that program is a free trap rental that we provide to the public and our barn cat adoption program for unsocial cats who cannot be returned to where they came from. We also provide free food through our pet food pantry to colony caretakers, and this pantry is supported by public donations. And finally, if cats come to our shelter that already have an ear tip, meaning they're already spayed or neutered, we return them to where they were found without holding them in the shelter. So all of that makes up a community cat program. That said, I do appreciate the advocacy of these, of the folks behind me who've been coming to the meetings. And I know that they would like to see us increase our capacity. And so I want to touch on a couple places of where we currently stand and what we are going to do to help try and increase that capacity. So for now, we're current, for now, in May, we surveyed our cat trappers and TNR stakeholders to determine the best way to improve our TNR check-in process. And from that feedback, we implemented an online check-in process with the link available on our website. Appointments open at 6:00 PM the day before our surgery days, and they remain available until they're all filled, which is generally pretty quickly. People are able to sign up online from anywhere. And since these changes have been implemented, our TNR program is operating at about 85% to 90% capacity overall. And over the last three fiscal years, our shelter has provided TNR services to over 500 cats each year. And for context, just so you know, that is our shelter veterinarian doing those surgeries. And Sacramento County veterinarians at their shelter do zero TNR surgeries. And the same for Front Street. They do zero TNR surgeries. Both of those regional shelters defer their TNR services to the local high-volume spay and neuter clinics. So I believe that makes us, that we're giving enhanced services to our citizens by offering it right there at our shelter. Now, we are currently exploring a partnership with these local high-volume clinics to make more capacity for Elk Grove Community Cat surgeries. So they would be, we're exploring trying to get some earmarked spots that Elk Grove cats could be brought to those high-volume clinics. We're exploring grant opportunities to support that partnership. And of course, we're always open to community fundraising efforts to support more TNR for that. And as I mentioned, we are in the process of hiring additional part-time veterinary support to help with the workload. And we're recruiting more contract veterinarians to reduce service cancellations due to staff absences. Later this month, I will be attending the meeting that the Sacramento Animal Shelter Director mentioned for regional shelter leaders that they're going to discuss community cats. I will be there. And beginning in September, we will be initiating quarterly Zoom meetings with our Elk Grove TNR stakeholders in order to better share information, get feedback, and share updates and info about what's going on with the community cats in our city and what we can do to help mitigate that. I believe that is everything that I wanted to update you guys on. And if you have any questions, I can take those as well or after a public comment.
Excellent update. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have several people signed up. We will start with Estella Drake, followed by Kathy Mendoza.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Police Chief, and City Manager and Staff. My name is Estella Drake, and I live in Elk Grove District 2. As you know, I've been attending the Elk Grove Council meetings for months and have spoken on behalf of the voiceless animals of Elk Grove. Our team has reviewed all 66 pages of the animal shelter survey, and we are here today, once again, to bring positive light to the city of Elk Grove Shelter and the city animals, and we pray you will be on the same page as us. Please support hiring a part-time or full-time contracted veterinarian as an alternative to a full-time employee vet as soon as possible, not a year from now or the following year, so we can move ahead and tackle the overpopulation of the Elk Grove cats. And to furthermore assist Dr. Mary, our amazing shelter veterinarian, team big-heart trappers who do the TNR, the wonderful staff and volunteers that need to catch their breath. They are clearly overworked even now than when they were short-staffed. And yes, they are suffering too. If you have not done so, I encourage you to please take the time to meet with everyone I have mentioned, to help us all, so we can also help you keep Elk Grove great. Because it takes a village and a united community. And I'm sure you guys agree. As a final note from yesterday, August 8th, was International Cat Day. Our big-heart team is sharing a gift of thank you to hang on your wall, on your walls every year as a reminder of the positive decisions you have made today to help our Elk Grove community tackle the overpopulation of cats suffering on the streets. So I really hope you enjoy what I, what Steph or team gave you. Okay? And also, just want to mention on the survey that the low-cost spay and neuter program is great, but it's really, it really needs another veterinarian because when the mama cat is pregnant and the veterinarian goes on vacation, the kitty is not going to say, okay, I'll wait till you return. And now we have another 12 kittens on the list. So the other thing is the TNR community should be included, like they had mentioned, every year. Talk to these people, get the survey, find out what's going on. Because we all follow all these different pages, Elk Grove Spay and Neuter, and see all of these crazy things that are happening and not getting the services that we are being told are available. So thank you so much, and please consider approving a part-time or a full-time contracted veterinarian today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Mendoza, followed by Kimberly Mendoza.
So good evening, everyone. I am here to ask you all to hire a contract vet. The 66-page study will show that spay and neuter is not being prioritized. The need is there and the numbers are showing it. The SPCA did the research and they sought out the reason why pet owners and also TNR volunteers weren't spaying and neutering. The reasons are similar between the both. There is just not enough available and affordable spay and neuter. But if you look at low-cost spay and neuter clinics and including our own shelter, their program is booked every month. I am glad to see that City Gate agrees that the shelter is understaffed, and unfortunately, it's in multiple departments. Most of the staff are wearing different hats, many hats. A staff member from the vet, the vet team says that they can't catch their breath. So what does that tell you? That it can't wait another year or another four years or after 2028 when it's finally considered to hire a second vet or a contract vet. The shelter provided City Gate with a list of goals, as Ms. Glick mentioned. One of the three listed was low-cost spay and neuter service to the community. But how are we going to accomplish that if we aren't prioritizing vet staff in the first phase? I saw that she wrote, "Successful models have incorporated collaboration with local veterinary communities to expand availability for TNR services beyond what a shelter can provide." We currently don't have that. Just in July, three of the eight days were canceled. The, yeah, multiple people were on vacation or had taken time off. We don't have another option when the vet team goes on vacation. We need a contract vet to fill in when people are unavailable so that we don't cancel TNR. We have a new and beautiful facility with the necessary equipment, resources, vehicles, but we are lacking the staff. Since the shelter opened, 3,118 animals were placed in foster care, and 72 of those animals were kittens. The majority of the animals that are being brought in are cats. So animal care positions are needed, but the positions that directly relate to spay and neuter are vet positions. So please, I ask you to consider hiring a contract vet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kimberly Mendoza, followed by Maria Calderon.
And Ms. Mendoza submitted a PowerPoint visual presentation for this agendized item, so we'll be pulling that up for her use at this current time.
Okay. Good evening. I would like, I would like to ask all of you to consider a contract veterinarian that can assist with spay and neuter services. You are all aware of the concerns and know why we are calling for veterinary assistance. So based on estimates, we are possibly experiencing as many as 29,600 community cats. This figure comes from the formula published by Crawford and Levy that divides the city's population by six for warmer climates or divided by 10 for mild to cool climates. Last year, Elk Grove Animal Shelter TNRed 780 cat. Using these numbers, we would spay and neuter the estimated 29,600 cats in 38 years. It would take approximately 30 years to spay and neuter 80% of the cats. Of course, community cats are not expected to live over three decades. This is only to demonstrate the seriousness of the overpopulation we have in our community. It is spilling into our shelter. There are more cats and kittens and kennels, and we cannot foster or adopt our way out of overpopulation. We need to enhance spay and neuter services in Elk Grove and across the state, which is why we need to phase in veterinary staff sooner than fiscal year 2027 to 2028. And these numbers are estimates I would like to offer to pay the annual fee for cat stats if the animal shelter would like to use it. It tracks cat colonies. It is important for trappers to have a record of colonies in our community so we can organize targeted TNR. Targeted TNR is tremendously more impactful than catching one or two cats, which is why we need additional veterinary staff phased in sooner than four years. I would also like to offer our assistance to table with or on behalf of the animal shelter in order to bring awareness of the facility and the services they offer. I know the shelter is short on an outreach coordinator, and that is why they do not participate in community events as often as they like. We would like to help with that. Please consider a contract veterinarian to help us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maria Calderon, followed by Paula, I mess this up every time. Paula Sheckelman McCarthy.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, and thank you for having all of us here tonight and considering these changes. And I also wanted to say thank Sarah for taking on that meeting with the Director of Bradshaw about getting this under control and for clarifying some of that TNR information for us. So just to give perspective, 80% of cat kittens outdoor are born to feral or stray moms. And usually, on average, a feral or stray cat has about four litters per year. So just to respectively, constructively show on this study that on page six, Table 1, it said that the intake for cats in 2020 were 940, and in 2022, it's up to 1,196. One thing that the study didn't consider was that a lot of the cats and kittens that are brought into the shelter are not always accepted. So if every cat and kitten was accepted into the shelter, I'm sure those numbers would at least been doubled if not tripled. Unfortunately, with cats, they don't have a way to have contraceptives. That's something that, you know, birth control, they're working on right now. And euthanization is not the solution for this problem. So really, the only solution we have is spay and neuter. As a trapper myself, I see it all the time. You know, an elderly couple starts feeding a female that comes around that's pregnant, and then in two years, it's out of control. There's about 30, 40 cats, and it's to the point where it's unbearable for, you know, just an elderly couple to control. And it's not the cat's fault. It's not the couple's fault. It's the fact that, you know, there needs to be a lot of education about the TNR, and we need to have the resources because spay and neuter, it's all across the board. There's not enough of it. So to get this part-time or full-time contract vet is crucial to your guys' community. Whether you guys are animal lovers or not, it's not just affecting the animals. It's also affecting your guys' community. It's affecting, you know, the shelters. It's affecting everybody across the board. So this is a very important problem that we need to conquer. And, you know, it would just be nice to have your guys' support. You know, we've been coming for, oh, I haven't, but the group has been coming for so long. And it's just, you know, it's hard to see these cats, and a lot of the kittens don't make it. But, you know, when they're born outside and when people try to bring them in, by the time you find the kittens, they're not, they're about like eight weeks old, two months. And then it's hard to get them in the shelter because they won't take them when they're about a certain age because they think that they can fend for themselves. They're still babies. So, you know, getting those cats spayed and neutered, you know, increasing the TNR program and the community cat program that Elk Grove has would be crucial. So we really need a part-time, full-time contract vet. And I just ask all of you council members to please be in support of this because as the trappers, rescues, shelters, community, most of all the animals, we really need it. So please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula, followed by Janice Mackey.
It's Lickleman, just so you know.
It's okay. Thank you, Sarah, for your updates. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and council members. Thank you for addressing us and our concerns that relate to the City Gate study and the need at the local Elk Grove Animal Shelter. We are looking for a positive solution to the continued angst we experience regarding the staffing shortages at the shelter. After a thorough review of the City Gate study, we appreciate the findings of the study. And while there are some discrepancies, the report supports the concerns we have been voicing over the past year. If we cannot have a second full-time veterinarian, please at least consider a contracted part-time veterinary, veterinarian to help us with our regular vet, when our regular vet is unavailable. As referenced in Section 1.1 of the study, and our concerns begin with the staff and their various quotes, no longer capable of providing this proper level of care, cutting corners, et cetera, et cetera. As you well remember from our public statement at the last council meeting regarding an injured cat, and after being evaluated, was simply given a Kovenia 10-day antibiotic shot, shot, and was told to go ahead and return it to field. Though a year and a half prior, a cat with also a severely fractured leg was brought in and properly treated with an amputation and put into foster care. This is the example of the problems arising from the shelter being understaffed. There have been changes in the quality of care. A contracted part-time vet would and could alleviate these inconsistencies. When referencing Section 1.2.3 of the study, Veterinary Services Department, the shortage of staff affects the TNR program. As you have heard in the previous council meetings, multiple TNR days are canceled due to shortage of staff. However, canceled TNR clinics have many negative effects, beginning with cats not fixed resulting in kittens being born and the overcrowding of the shelter. If the TNR clinic's schedule was kept and/or more days made available, imagine the time and cost savings that could occur if supported by a contracted part-time vet. Referencing Section 2.4.4 of the study, Veterinary Care Department, the verbiage, I quote, "The use of a contract veterinarian to fill in when the staff veterinarian is unavailable is a good practice and should be continued." We are unaware of a contract veterinarian providing services at the shelter ever. This may be a good practice, but it has never been implemented that we know of. Who is it? What is their name? What dates were they there? Why weren't they used the three to four days TNR was canceled in July? Please, if we cannot get a second full-time veterinarian, at least approve a contracted part-time vet for now. Elk Grove will continue to grow as an, as the City Gate study already confirms, and a second full-time veterinarian along with other shelter staff will be needed in the near future. For now, a contracted part-time veterinarian would help some of the overload.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Janice Mackey, followed by Elizabeth Fong.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I just wanted to say that we do need a full-time contracted veterinarian. The city is growing by leaps and bounds, and the shelter is obviously not keeping up with it. And, and it's no fault of their own, but we're just growing so much. And when I was listening to that presentation about all those apartments and housing going up, I'm thinking, oh my God, we're going to have more cats in town that aren't going to be spayed or neutered. There's going to be kittens near dumpsters. It's going to be crazy. I do appreciate that the city is trying to figure out ways to improve the shelter, hiring a consulting group and so forth. But I do think that kind of fell short. It didn't feel like they really talked to the trappers, the rescue groups, and really kind of finding that problem. If we could increase the trap and neutering services, the spay and neutering services, and have instead of a goal of 200 per year and do 100 a month, that would, that would put all these trappers out of business.
Maintain decorum so we can hear her. Thank you.
That would put these trappers out of business, and that's what we want to do. We want to eliminate the feral cats. I'm a cat person. I don't like seeing cats roaming around. And I know for some that that's their only situation. I've fed colonies for years, but we really need to just get to the root of the problem, you know? Elk Grove is growing by leaps and bounds, and our shelter needs to do the same. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Fong, followed by Stacy.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see the council again. Hope you're all doing well. You're going to hear a lot of me reiterating what's been said, but the, the dire need for a second vet is what's the number one item on our agenda, as you can see. I, I did not see that in the report for City Gate. I did see a lot of positions, but as far as another vet being added to the team, that is a definite dire need. Trap and neuter release program, like my fellow team members have been saying, there's a large amount of cats being trapped and brought in and just not enough staff, appropriate staff at the shelter to accommodate fixing those ferals. I can go into a lot of stuff that's already been said, has my notes, but I want to shift it over to also the community. You know, I am a feeder. I have a colony. All 15 of my cats have been fixed. So we take responsibility for that, you know? And that's something that the city, you as our leaders, need to recognize and appreciate because we are putting in the effort to try to contain this citywide problem. In my colony, I am welcomed a lot by a lot of my, a lot of the neighbors that live around the colony. They thank me. But then I also have some that complain, you know? I don't want to see cats around here. I don't want this. And I inform them and I educate them, hey, people with, like me and, and trappers, other trappers, you're going to have 1,000 more cats running around your area if it wasn't for people like us. So we have the compassion. We have the desire to do the job effortlessly. We don't ask to get paid. You know, I am a single parent. I put $300 out of my own. I take away from my sons to feed the feral cats. So they do away with stuff that they should be getting, but they're not because that's a choice I made because this is the humane thing to do. We are merely asking for another vet to accommodate the need of the shelter, dire need of the shelter, to fix this ongoing problem in our community. One last thing I'd like to say, well, a couple of things, is to please consider increasing the budget, dispersing some funds to the animal care services for the proper care and treatment that is in dire need. You know, we're getting stronger. We're growing bigger. We're becoming more united. This isn't going to go away because we're in it. We are in this situation. We deal with it every day. We're asking you to please vote, you, I'm asking you personally, and vote. Help increase us, the, the funding. And I want to leave you with this quote by famous actor, one of my favorite, Joaquin Phoenix, who's an amazing animal advocate. "It takes nothing away from a human to be kind to an animal." And I say that not on behalf of just the cats, but on animals alone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Stacy, followed by Gail Platsis.
Hello again. I'm Stacy. I'm trying to erase everything everybody already said, so my, my speech will be shorter. My focus is the study says the shelter medical team has a capability to provide extensive veterinary care for the animals at the shelter. When it's after hours or even during hours, if they have a broken leg and the machine's been broken to do any x-rays, the vet fills around the bone. Most people can't find us, what do you call it? Fracture on a bone through filling it. And the x-ray machine was not working. They should be taking it to the ER that they contract with, which supposedly through the 21 staff, what do you call this thing, report, says that they contract with VCA Bradshaw. I've tried in this last year, if not months, to try to take injured cats through VCA Bradshaw after hours. They will not accept any of the cats. So if they are contracting with this veterinarian or ER, why aren't they taking the cats? What are we supposed to be doing in taking these cats with holes in their necks, broken legs, face crushed? You know, where do we take these animals if there is no ER willing to take them? If you're going to contract with an ER, have one that's open 24 hours and we'll take the cats. I know Bradshaw is always saying they're understaffed. The vet is going home at a certain time. Take us to VCA Vista, whatever that's called. Change our areas. We should be able to do a good Samaritan surrender. If anything, if we don't have shelters prior approval, again, they will not accept any injured cat. A contracted vet for after-hours, weekends especially, would be able to take care of these cats so we can get these off the street and into, into medical care. But again, we don't have a contracted vet or anyone to take care of the cats. So hiring a contracted vet will eliminate these injured cats. You have pregnants with their uterus hanging out. It's called pyometria. What are you going to do with that? Wait until Tuesday? Because Monday's the TNR day, and if it's already been a fixed cat, you got to wait till Tuesday at noon to get her uterus shoved back inside her. And she'll usually die. They bleed out internally. So we need that contracted vet for these kind of cases, or these animals are just dying in neighbors' streets. Kids are seeing them on the sides of the road. in neighbors' streets, kids are seeing them on the sides of the road. You know, let's help the citizens get care for these cats and let the cats get care, you know? Please hire a contracted vet. And I've scribbled everywhere. I think that was everything. But the relief off of Mary Stice, she's got to be stressed. I see her when I talk to her, and she just looks worn. Help her, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gail Platsis, followed by Julie Verga.
I know you've heard a lot tonight, and especially from Sarah Humley. I have probably a couple of questions for her, but my, obviously, our biggest concern is we need an additional vet or a contract part-time vet. In writing down my concerns about that, which most people have already talked about, I've learned that it kind of trickles down from the vet all the way down to my individual concerns and concerns of most of us trappers. I'm going to talk a little bit about the fosters as well as space. Trying to intake kittens, I'm always told that they just don't have the space, so I want to talk a little bit about that. I know you've seen all this statistics and have heard that the medical staff can't come up for air in trying to keep up with the demands of TNR. Additionally, kittens for adoption are waiting in shelter kennels, which takes up needed space as well. Yes, it is clear we need an additional vet and its staff, but it doesn't stop there. With an additional vet, the shelter could accommodate more days and more spots per day for the TNR explosion we're all dealing with. We trappers can't come up for air either. Right now, spots are taken up within a few minutes of signing in our wonderful system that was put in. We can't, it's taken up, it's filled up within a few minutes, which leaves trappers with feral cats and not knowing what to do with them. Some of us can keep them for three days, which is very difficult. Most of us cannot, and so that, you know, presents a problem. We can't release them again because we'll never catch them again. Along with adding another day and definitely more spots per day, a solution is put to the TNR back-to-back, for TNR to be back-to-back days to accommodate those left behind and those that are caught in the mornings. And we don't, let's not forget, the sick and injured, we don't want their care compromised as well because we don't have enough vet staff. Concerning space and space needed for adoptables, can foster parents have the option to keep their kittens till they've found suitable homes rather than taking up space in the shelter waiting? And wondering also if the staff, the shelter staff, could like schedule fix-it days for the kittens that are out in foster. This, I think, would help a lot on the space already?
Already, sorry.
No. Okay. Well, anyway, thanks for listening, and I hope we vote yes for our new vet.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Julie Verga, followed by Diane Schram Egnello.
Good evening. My name is Julie Verga, and I'm a businesswoman in Sacramento and an animal advocate, and I just want to give you a big hand because what you have done here tonight, we have been trying to get Sacramento City Council to do for over three years now. And so, I applaud you for taking a proactive stance and for ordering a study and for doing what you're doing and listening to all these advocates. I would like to thank all of these advocates so much for taking the time and energy to come out here on behalf of animals. And I want to point out a couple of things, whether you love animals or don't, and not everybody does, I recognize, even though I might, there's some real risk issues that you face if you follow some of these trends that I believe, and in fact, I know to believe, have been named as best practices, in particular UC Davis Corret. I know it may sound like they, all of their plans and programs are wonderful, but they're against state law, okay? To turn away animals at a door, okay, whether they're cat, and Hayden's Law and Rabies Law do not distinguish between cats and dogs, okay? Turning them away at the door is against state law. There's litigation going throughout our state. Transference of risk is huge to city governments if you follow these practices, and besides the fact that it's inhumane. And let's just talk about common sense, okay? We got into this mess right now, there are so many animals out in the streets, because these trends have been followed, okay? Not all of what happened during COVID was because of COVID. It was because irresponsible trends were being followed in which they turned animals away at the door, especially cats and kittens, and especially friendly cats and kittens, okay? So, make no mistake, there's a lot more to these stories. In politics, you must know that that's always the case, okay? There's always more to the story. So, let's talk about spay-neuter. It is true for a fact that veterinarians for shelters are hard to come by. It is not true, however, that there are not veterinarians who specialize in high-volume spay-neuter services. It's a specialty. There are teams that do it. They can do 50, 60, 70, sometimes more, animals in a day. To be able to contract with veterinarians, surgical teams that can do that, you would really be able to tackle a big problem that you have because these populations are not going to go away if you ignore them, okay? They are only going to get exponentially greater, and so, it really makes no sense to not address it. And whether that is with bringing in extra staff, contracted vets, or however you do that, please figure out a way. You've taken the time to do this study. There's a lot of good with this study, and so, I appreciate your time and energy and listening to us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Schram Egnello, followed by Hillary Bagley-Frenzoya.
Good evening, Mayor Allen Singh and members of the council. My name is Diane Schram Egnello. Tonight, I would like to voice my support for hiring the second contracted veterinarian as recommended by the consultants hired by the city. I am also speaking on the topic of the foster care program as a volunteer foster caregiver. The hiring of a second contracted vet would reduce the amount of time an animal stays in the shelter. The longer an animal stays in the shelter, the more likely it will become stressed and may become ill. If the animal becomes ill, the animal will require more staff, more staff time, medications, and may require an extended stay and additional financial resources. The hiring of a second contracted vet will help move the animals out of the shelter more quickly, which will create more space in the shelter. In 2022, the study that was done, the average days a kitten was in foster care, it said 16 days. Currently, I have fostered three kittens from June 9th until August 7th. That is 60 days. 60 days, not 16, 60 days. I am not the only volunteer foster that has experienced this situation. This lengthy time period was due to no space available in the shelter. How can we, as fosters, keep these kittens for two months before they are neutered or spayed and put up for adoption? At that time, they will no longer be kittens. The longer the kittens are in foster care, it could reduce their chances of getting adopted. People wanting kittens can't come to my house to visit and view the kittens. We are fosters. We, as fosters, want our kittens to be adopted. The hiring of a second contracted vet will help adopt out the healthy kittens from the shelter and allow the fosters to minimize their time with the kittens. This will allow us volunteers to care for more additional foster kittens. We, as fosters, are a great extended resource for the shelter. We know how to provide care for all types of situations. We can help manage the care and flow of the shelter animals. We stand ready to do so, and we are called upon every day. But we also know that the expertise lies with a well-staffed, well-run facility like we have at the Elk Grove Animal Shelter. We all need it to be that way, and the expertise will be enhanced with the hiring of a second contracted vet. Everyone will benefit, the staff, the community, the animals, the huge network of volunteers. We couldn't be more proud of our Elk Grove Shelter. Join us in providing additional support to the shelter. We need the city to provide the necessary resources to Elk Grove Shelter. We need a second contracted vet. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Hillary Bagley-Frenzoya, and the final speaker is Randy Becker.
Good evening. May it please, the mayor and council, as well as the ladies and gentlemen in the audience, as well as Sarah Humley, who I'm honored to be in the presence of tonight. My name is Hillary Bagley-Frenzoya, and I was a prosecutor for over 30 years. Throughout that 30 years, I handled animal abuse and cruelty and neglect cases years and years and years, all through gangs, all through homicides, all through child molest, animal cruelty I did as a sidekick. At the end of my tenure for the last two and a half years, I was honored to be given a cruelty unit as well as a task force. And what that meant is that I was able to train, because I had been training for many years, Elk Grove police officers who were wonderful, Elk Grove animal control officers, and I'm happy to say that I never once had a bad interaction with Sarah, your director, your lovely shelter, and your officers. I wish, and I live in the city of Sacramento, by the way, I wish we had Sarah Humley leading our shelter. I'm going to say some things today that are going to sound crazy, they're going to sound illogical, but I want you to know what's coming down the pike because I want you to be forward-thinking and I want you to anticipate what will occur here, the way it's occurring throughout this region. Let me start because I have to break this down. The governor wants less animals coming in the shelter, he wants less death in the shelter, he wants to move forward in a no-kill way. Sounds admirable. He assigned Corret Shelter Medicine to disseminate grants, state grants, and the problem is that Corret does not feel spay and neuter is innovative enough. They want to move progressive trends, Ms. Verga mentioned them, and the core trend is community sheltering. And this sounds nuts, but this is what it means. It means that Corret and these programs, if shelters want the grants and want the state money, that the shelters are told the community can shelter. Shelters should just be for sick and injured, get the community to shelter. When they bring in stray animals, stray dogs, they can go back on the street. They can go back on the street and the community and the residents who are trying to bring them in can shelter them in their yards and their garages and their crates, and they can do private adoptions, in fact. We don't have to touch it at all. We'll just handle the few that we select when we feel that we're within our capacity and they're sick and injured. Now, the problem, on many, many levels, there are problems, but the biggest problem is these animals that are being denied and rejected for admission are unaltered. So, the problem that Ms. Glick mentioned, as far as the pandemic and the great increase in intake after the pan...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You've been heard.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Our final speaker is Randy Becker.
I'm going to see if, hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm going to see if I can straighten this out a little. The group behind me has done a wonderful job, but what they don't realize is that the five of you cannot give them what they need. The community can't give them what they need. We need a second vet. That's a definite. But a second vet will not cure the problem. It just will not. The math does not add up. And the reality is, it will not add up, and nobody wants to say that, but I will. It's not much different than the squirrels at Meawak Park or the goose and duck population at Elk Grove Park. As humans, we love our animals, but in all honesty, we are the worst caregivers. If you really think about it, we are the worst because we don't let them live the way they should in the natural settings. Cats, dogs are animals of humans in general. I reached out when I made a decision to have my expensive dog spated. I reached out and looked at Elk Grove Animal Shelter. From what I heard, what I had heard, and the wait time was unacceptable. As a taxpayer, it was unacceptable. For a department to have six vacancies is unacceptable. Every month, we bring in a whole bunch of new employees, so I have to ask why our beautiful animal shelter got down to six vacancies. What was the reason? This report, is it going to give us what we need at the end date? Or is that just a football in the air flying down the field? I think we need to have an oversight adjustment every year to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for. As a young city, we want so much, but it's at a cost, and so, we have to be careful in our expenditures. But at the same time, we need to do the right thing, and a vet, a second vet, would be the right thing to do, but it's not going to cure the problem because the math doesn't add up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I believe that concludes the public comment portion, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Sarah, if you don't mind coming back up. Before I turn it over to some colleagues, I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions. How many vacancies actually remain?
So, we have two vacancies currently, not including the three new positions. Those are currently vacant because we just started recruiting.
We just started recruiting, okay. Wanted to make sure.
But we have hired the people who are going to fill those two other vacancies.
The other positions, okay. I just wanted to get that clarifying point. You mentioned in your remarks regarding the contract vet to augment services. Can you elaborate more on that?
So, we currently have two vets under contract to work relief, but they are in high demand, and they have their pick of where they can go and work and be scheduled. And some of them have like part-time or full-time jobs at other places too, and so, we are at the whim of their schedule as well as our vet's schedule. So, sometimes those days don't always line up. The city has made some adjustments to help us be more competitive for recruiting those contract vets, and so, we are looking to kind of deepen our bench of contract vets so that hopefully every time our vet has an absence, we will be able to fill in those days. In the past, we've had vets that fill in, but maybe if she's gone for five days, we only were able to fill two days or three days of her absence, so. We do try and prioritize the TNR days on those.
Were you saying something? Okay. So, we do have a process, we do have contract... So we do have a process, we do have contract the capacity to do this.
Yes. We also have the outside emergency contract vets too, for 24/7 service. So we contract with VCA Bradshaw and Mueller.
So, hold on, hold on, we've already heard from the public. So before I actually ask my next question, I'm going to give you this opportunity. I know you've heard a few things, statements being made. If you want to provide your feedback on some, on any of the statements. And then I'll keep, I do have a few more clarifying questions.
I think that was the biggest clarification, is that we do contract with a 24/7 emergency vet that does allow good Sam drop-offs. However, VCA Mueller, even though they're open 24 hours a day, they get inundated as well and they do kind of reserve the right to refuse animals if they're already full with all the animals they can care for. And there's really nothing we can do about that.
Okay, so I mean, I'm definitely interested in having, you know, augmenting the services. Because, you know, with all due respect to our vet, I, you know, definitely overworked, we're hearing a lot of, you know, and I appreciate all of the services everybody's providing. So it sounds like we are doing that, but it's not being met. Right? In other words, we have the capacity to provide our contract vets. We have an arrangement, but we are not necessarily competitive. The vets are picking and choosing perhaps different cities. I think that's a huge gap that would address a lot of the needs. So what are your thoughts in terms of how we can, is it the money? Where is, where do you think the disconnect might be?
We had some disconnect that was being an obstacle by requiring some of our insurance requirements for the veterinarians. It created some additional kind of hurdles that they had to go through. And so if they don't take the time to do that or don't want the additional expense of that, even though we try to offset it with what we're paying, they just schedule other places or they don't come work for us. So I think we've rectified that and we've already got a solution for that going and-
So is it in place now or is it something that's coming?
So it's in place now. But we have to amend our current contracts with our contract veterinarians to finalize that. And then also, I believe it will help us recruit more. And like I said, kind of have a deeper bench. Because they are very busy people, these contract vets that work relief for shelters. And sometimes you've got to schedule them, you know, three, four, five months in advance. So all our planned absences, we can try and get covered. I have our vet tell me all her vacations for the whole year, you know, so that we can try and get on that schedule.
So those would be for those absences?
Yeah, but it may not-
Now, how about addressing the need of augmenting it in terms of, you know, we have a huge need on an ongoing basis until we at least get some grasp. I know we can't get a full handle on all of the needs with the TNR. But if we can augment services on an ongoing basis so that there are additional dedicated times focused solely on this, without the responsibility of just hiring a full-time staff, which has, again, a bigger burden, right, to absorb. But as a contract, we can augment and identify either, you know, a certain day but to provide those augmented services is definitely something that I would be interested in seeing. Because if we already have these relationships, if we have a dedicated time for TNR and just doing that around the clock, I think, I mean, that would be certainly something that I would be interested in looking at of what that would look like. I know that's not something we delved into the study per se, but I think the needs have been identified. And so certainly that additional relief, not just on times off or when some emergencies come up, but providing some dedicated time as a contractor to augment some of those services.
Yeah, I will say-
Would be something that I would be, I mean, I don't know how my other colleagues feel, but that is something that I would be interested in looking at.
Sure. And we can absolutely look at that. I think either, I think that can be filled by either partnering with these high-volume spay-neuter clinics that are already set up with teams of vets. Or it can also be, contract vets for us can probably meet some of that need, but recognize it's not just a vet that you need to do those surgeries. You also need the support staff filling in behind them.
Right.
To enable us to do like a volume of surgery like that.
Right, okay. I have other questions and comments I will save for the end, but I just want to get some of that clarifying stuff. But thank you for your follow-up presentation and your comments. I think that was super helpful. And I do want to thank Jan with Citygate for your very thorough report. Because I know what we pride ourselves in is also that data-driven decision-making to make sure that we are protecting the taxpayer money. So it's balancing both of those things. I appreciate both of the presentations. So I will start, so I went to the right, I think, last time, so I'll go back to the left and start with Councilmember Suein.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. First, Sarah, I appreciate the report and the, and Citygate's report as well. But I also want to thank all of you, your continuous engagement, passion, advocacy, patience. I know you've been coming a lot, you've been looking for the data. But as you see, we too have been waiting for the data before, you know, we wanted to weigh in. So I hope you can appreciate, we weren't trying to just be silent. We wanted to get this report in hand. And so we appreciate your patience for this and your willingness to help. I heard some of you say about, you know, trying to fundraise and even help with this effort. So that's really true testament to your dedication on this issue. Look, I remember not too long ago when we were listening to how it was unsustainable to depend on the Bradshaw Animal Shelter. And we were, you know, I've always been a big advocate for this animal shelter, but we were faced with that challenge back then. And then, you know, I was very disturbed to see in the report, and I appreciate our staff's honesty in this and our leadership here for their willingness to embrace that honesty. In other words, you know, it's, hearing honest testimony from our staff, as, you know, concerning as it is, it's the only way we can address the issue. You know, being able to, when you hear things like can't catch our breath or feeling no longer, being able to provide a proper level of care. I mean, these are issues we definitely want to address as soon as possible. So again, I want to thank our staff for their willingness to be honest about the situation as to their daily reality that they're living on the job. And so, you know, to that end, I mean, I recognize that there's a large cost to operating the shelter, but it is a public need, it's a public service that we must provide, you know. And I don't, I mean, I'm a dog owner, I'm a cat owner, so I certainly have, you know, that empathy there. But even if I didn't, you know, I would tell you, the quality of life of our citizens, I think are better off with our animals that are well-cared-for. And the rest of our residents, even if, you know, whether you have animals or not, ensuring that our community isn't, you know, overrun or negatively affected by our animals, I think is a responsibility for our city. So I recognize it is a significant cost, but it is something that as a city, we need to provide. And so I appreciate these recommendations. I certainly hope we can fill these as soon as possible. I also support contracting, you know, with a veterinarian, if that's what it takes. I see the recommendations called for some technical support for veterinarians. That would provide some relief, if I'm understanding that correctly, Sarah, that to our veterinarian, if we had some, the technical support for the veterinarian as well, right?
Are you referring to like additional vet assistance?
Yeah.
Yes, veterinary techs? Yes, absolutely.
So, great. And so hopefully that would help. But if need be, definitely the contracting of an additional vet, if that's what's needed, then, you know, I would support that as well. And I'm glad to hear that you're reaching out to these other clinics to try to develop partnerships with them. I think during our staff briefing, we talked about getting to the mayor's point about trying to clear that path for the other veterinarians. I mean, you know, if it's a minor cost of, if we require their liability insurance, it's a minor cost. If we had, you know, a few hundred dollars, if we had to take that on to make it an even playing field, you know, things like that, exploring out of the box thinking, I think I would support. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Spies?
Sure, okay. So first, I want to say thanks to the staff of the animal shelter. And the reason I say that is in the last, you know, it's been about the last year, right? It's been some very tough days for folks. And it wasn't just because of the high volume of work. It was, there were some tough days because there were some community members that were less than gracious. And they made it very difficult for the staff. And, you know, some not kind things were said. And I think it's important to note that we know, I'll speak for everybody here, we know that you care and we know that you're doing the best that you can for the animals because you're there for them. You're there for that reason. So I want, if you could please, you know, for the rest of staff, please let them know that we appreciate them. And I was disappointed to hear that they felt run down simply from the volume of work, right? That's not anything we would ever want to have for anyone. So I want to apologize for that and let you know that we appreciate you. Now, it isn't just about the shelter team, right? There's a whole volunteer ecosystem, some of whom are in the room. And so I definitely want to say thank you for that. Trap and neuter, trap-neuter release, the adoption, the folks who go and help clean out the kennels and fundraisers like June Levine, and there's just a whole ecosystem. And so for that, I want to say thank you and thank you for your diligence and thank you for continuing to do what you feel is the best for the animals. So without the combined efforts of the team, you know, the situation would probably be even more difficult. One thing I do want to point out is that the animal shelter is highly subsidized by the general fund. It's highly subsidized by the general fund. And I think we need to be very aware that not only do we have an animal shelter, we have other city issues as well. And while sometimes we may not be acting in the way that everybody wants us to do or a certain group may want to do, we also have competing interests. Crime, homelessness, just a whole bunch of other things. So it's very difficult sometimes. It's, I understand that we get very passionate about what is important to us. I do ask that you recognize that we have other competing interests, okay? I do support, or I appreciate the recommendations of the report. I think a contracted veterinarian is a good approach. And we've been doing that, but we have reasons or we have abilities, right, to make that a more robust system. And I think that's the best. I think it's the best thing to do that gives us flexibility for short surges, but at the same point in time, doesn't commit us to long-term payroll. And so I think it's a good approach. I think that's mostly all I have to say on it. And so with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question from Ms. Humble. How many spay-neuter procedures are done on the days when we have to do the TNR days?
So we do it twice a week. On Monday, we offer six spots and on Thursday, we offer ten spots. So we'll do sixteen a week, every week, except for the days that either were closed to a staff absence or a holiday or something like that. And I will say, yes, July had several days that were closed, but out of, since January 1st this year, we've only been closed six times due to staff absences. And we've had over sixty-plus days of TNR offered.
And so for the six on the first day, ten on the second day, how many hours does it usually take to do one procedure?
Oh, one procedure will be done in about fifteen or twenty minutes, depending if it's a female or male. But those aren't the only animals that we're also doing that day. So we add them to the list of shelter animals that need to be done. And our shelter staff are doing anywhere from about twenty to thirty surgeries a day.
And so by doing that sort of volume of surgeries and knowing that there is a shortage of shelter veterinarians in California, looking at the bigger picture, it's like you can only do so many surgeries a day, but at the same time, if you're doing that high a volume, you are experiencing burnout, fatigue. And for some that are like vet techs or veterinary assistants who came in with the best intentions, seeing some high turnover based on that type of volume and frequency, are we?
We haven't seen any turnover in our veterinary area so far, since we opened, in our veterinary staff.
But it's definitely clear that added hands are needed to do the work. Because we're open, what, five days a week?
We are open six days a week.
Six days a week. And so you have that one day a week for rest and to get the batteries recharged, plus the ability to help clean the animal services facility. So, and the reason why I'm asking this question is because trying to look for, because, and I've been listening to the public commentary on this over the last few months. And I know the whole, the narrative has been, we have been crickets during this timeframe. I'm more of a thinker. I want to see what we can do. I want to analyze the whole bandwidth for this because it's a very serious issue. We have a large cat colonies and a lot out in Camden Passage, a lot out in Hampton Village, a lot in East Elk Grove. And those are like the hotspots, just for the east side alone. And when you see large numbers of cats, large numbers of stray dogs coming to the animal services clinic and nowhere else in the southern part of the county, it strikes for the need to have assistance and having an all-hands-on-deck type of program that involves the VCA's, the SPCA, in a way that it has never been done before. Because if the word that we're hearing from our Sacramento constituents are, nothing's being done up there, but we're doing work down here, but we cannot catch up with the marathon that has commenced. And our TNR volunteers who are doing the work, it's a thankless job. And I'm glad that we are acknowledging them and thanking them and giving them the form tonight because we can't really wait too much longer. Because if we delay a year, the amount of population that's going to come into, that's coming to our animal services is going to explode even more. And you and your team are going to be that much more taxed. So several things that come to mind in looking at, because I know we require general liability insurance for our contract veterinarians. And apparently that is a standard that may be a little too heavy. And the suggestion in the citywide, in the Citygate report was maybe if we require professional liability insurance as opposed to general liability insurance. And if that standard is something to explore, something to look at. Because if we already have contract veterinarians who we work with and if they're feeling that general liability insurance is a bridge too far and that's why they're conveniently saying that, I'm going to go work in Folsom today, I'm going to go work in Eldorado Hills, I'm going to go work in Roseville. If that's really, if that is one of the issues, I like having the high standard, but at the same time, it's like, this is triage. This is an emergency and we really need to take care of it now so we avoid further stresses on our system, further stresses on the staff, further stress on our volunteers. And we need to look for things that can allow us to be more nimble, be more agile in serving the needs of the public. I appreciated your report because in a way, that's what we were looking at and that's what we were talking about. And, and, and you had done it in a very eloquent way. Just like Ms. Glick through the Citygate report, laid it out in a very elegant way. And is really addressing an acute need. The veterinary care department, along with i- in, in the bigger context of animal care services, the veterinarian ca- care department really needs to have some assistance. Because this is, I don't, crisis is too big of a word, but there is, there is a situation. And we need to figure out a way to, uh, at least curtail the situation in a way to where we can breathe a little bit and feel like that we are on the wave instead of hav- having this wave crush us. So thank you for the information. This was very helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Sarah, for being here. And, you know, um, I want to echo what, uh, Vice Mayor Spies said is please send our best to the staff. And it's, it's, um, what this report showed us is that there is stuff that we can improve on. And nobody's perfect. There isn't an organization that's perfect. We're always a work in progress and, and this is something that we definitely can improve on. It highlights that and it's needed. I'm, I'm curious because I don't know other cities. Does Folsom have a, um, animal shelter?
No, they contract with the SPCA, I believe.
Carmichael?
They probably use county.
Okay. Citrus Heights?
Or Roseville. I'm, I'm not totally sure on what the...
So I'm trying to figure out, because I'm trying to see if, if they're having the same issues that we're having, right? I think we're, thank you. But I think we're unique in a sense that we have an animal shelter and we're doing our best that we can. Again, clearly, the study shows that there is room for improvement. And I'm glad to see that we're going to be getting, um, that we're filling in the, the veterinarian technician's spots. And I understand, and it sounds, because of the vets who are contracted out, they get to pick and choose if, when they want to work. I also understand that we're trying to do better as far as making it, um, it's more, I guess, competitive for them to come to Elk Grove and actually want to work here. So we're doing all the, the steps that, um, we're, we're trying to go towards that area. So I really appreciate that. Um, and I ask, this is obviously, it sounds like it's a regional thing. It sounds like it's going to be something that, and I'll say, I don't think one vet's going to solve every issue. You know, adding an extra vet, I, and, and that's kind of where I'm trying to get to. I, I, I understand I'm about helping out with anything that we need to help out, but I also agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Spies that we need to be cautious about, we have different competing interests as well with homelessness and law enforcement. But I do think that this needs to be addressed and I think we are taking the proper steps to address it. I think, I have another question. Is there anything that we've done? I know that we only have one event coordinator, correct? So it's difficult to do community outreach. I, I haven't seen it, but does Elk Grove have, um, kind of, when we do stuff on the weekends or on Friday nights or even movie nights, has there been anything where it's like, hey, come and foster? Can we take some of the animals that are at the animal shelter and have like a foster or, uh, uh, um, adoption process, probably even streamline it right there? And then have we done anything like that?
So we do, uh, so our volunteer coordinator is also kind of our outreach and events person as well. Um, and we do go to community events and offer either adoptable animals there or just have general information about the services we provide, if nothing else. Um, like we'll go to like the neighborhood markets, um, some of the city events when they have sponsored booths will be there. So we do try and go to them. There are more requests for us to go to places than we can accommodate. That's definitely sure. We're, we're having to say no sometimes. And, and then of course, we also have innovative programs that let people take our adoptable animals out into the community themselves too. So we have our doggy day out program. We have sleepover programs where they can take them for the shelter overnight. And, uh, that helps us market adoptable animals.
Has there ever been where, um, animals actually do go to the, um, events that are occurring? Like we have some, a, a setup area and, hey, come and see if you bond and, and you want to adopt. So I'm kind of going, you know, I, I, I would like to see, and you guys are doing amazing work, especially with trapping and everything. But I would also want to see, maybe this is something that we can all partner as a community, right? We can all have this buy-in and we can all take steps that are practical and like, hey, this is what I'm doing on the side job, tr- you know, trapping and, and helping out. But that at the same time, I also want to make sure that they have homes, you know, so that we don't have 13, um, cats in a colony, right? So that we do spread that. And I think that's something I think I would like to see. And if you have an event, I'll be the first one to sign up to be there and, and try to see if anybody would like to foster or adopt, uh, an animal. Um, because I know it's not only a cat problem, right? There, there's a lot of different animals that are at the animal shelter.
Yeah.
So I think this is a, a very, you know, unique opportunity that we have. And I think if we can all collectively come together, um, again, we understand that we're not perfect. And obviously, the, the study showed that. But we're going to be improving and we're a work in progress. And we're definitely going to do what we need to do to make sure that we ensure the safety of all animals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll, I took notes on to provide sort of can, you know, consensus remarks.
Thank you.
From what I've heard. There's much to be proud of in the report, much to be proud of. And, you know, our shelter was just, it's twen- you know, from 2019 forward. And the fact that our city has one is quite remarkable. Um, so there, you know, I, I don't want that to be lost. And we are obviously working very hard to address a lot of the needs and the gaps that are identified in the study. I also personally want to thank, um, I, the, the groups for coming for the last several months. I want to thank all of you for your hard work, your passion, your love of cats and what you do. Um, and I think all of us recognize that. It's not easy to come here, meeting after meeting. I know that it's sacrifice and time away from your families. So thank you for that. I want to thank Estella, Stacy, Kathy and Kim, who I met with on Monday. Thank you for, for the, for the great meeting. Um, one of the things that stuck out in the staff report that we've all recognized, that staff, well, one of, and from the report, that staff no longer is able to meet the service demands. I think we all recognize that. Um, I think you see here that we're animal lovers, um, as well. And I, I, so I think we all take this decision, um, very seriously. We've heard the need to expand. So we have the, we have, we have a, a, a contract vet program, but we don't realize it in its fullest potential. We're using it to augment services when someone needs it because they're sick or taking a vacation. Um, we've heard consensus that there's a desire to expand that to actually provide services, um, regularly, not just when, um, someone is sick or on vacation. Um, but as a contractor, I think there's consensus here, nobody is in support of a full-time staff person. Um, and the additional costs and burdens that would place on the city. But for a contractor, where all of those benefit packages and all of those things that don't need to be provided, but on an as-needed basis, we can augment services. So there is consensus on that. Let's see, so I've also, the community outreach, I, we've heard from several members here that, um, the outreach can be enhanced. And we have great partnership opportunities with everyone that's been coming for the last, um, several meetings. I know that even in my personal meeting with Estella, Stacy, Kathy and Kim, they personally are also very interested in being a part of that outreach effort. So I definitely encourage more community outreach so that we can bring greater awareness. And once that position is filled as well, we'll have dedicated staff and time to work on this. So I think those are some of the comments that I, I, in taking notes here, that I heard from, from my colleagues. Um, this is not direction here. We're not voting on anything, but we're providing some direction. And that direction is for expanding and enhancing that contract relationship and making sure that we're not creating our own obstacles and burdens to get there, namely these insurance policies. So I would love to, you know, I, how we're going to do the follow-up on that, I look forward to hearing.
It has already been done.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Uh, love all that. But then, but then of course, the, the added part.
Recruiting, yeah.
Is the recruiting because we, the need is there and let's start spaying and neutering, like literally. Assembly line. If it's only 15 minutes per animal, and I heard earlier of how many can be done in a day, is, is quite remarkable. It's not going to be 100%. But, you know, part of these discussions, we can't give you the full-time staff, but hopefully we can meet you at least halfway there, um, in providing the needs. The need is there. I think that, that's clear. And hopefully we get caught up to the point where we won't need that contract services, which is the benefit of having a contract service. We're not owning the staff then permanently. And as the city continues to grow, at some point, we probably will add someone, um, add, add that second vet. We're not there yet for a, a very specific need. So let's try to address that need and work our way out of that problem. So, um, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your tenacity and patience. With that, we will move on to our next item. Um, which is item 9.3.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Louis Sagular, Economic Development Program Manager. I have a brief presentation for you tonight. The item is to receive information and consider a resolution establishing the brewery, restaurant and winery incentive program. So the council identified some goals and priorities for the city. And those include, uh, to ensure that Elk Grove is a vibrant community and sustainable economy with diverse businesses and amenities. Also to ensure that, um, public and private development is high-quality, attractive and contributes to a sense of place. As well as facilitate development of enhanced retail, dining, arts and entertainment and hospitality projects and experiences that serve both the residents and visitors. So before I get into the program, I just wanted to, um, for transparency, highlight that we've been supporting breweries, restaurants and wineries, specifically since 2015 through our umbrella economic development incentive program. We've, we've been able to assist for permit fees, development impact fees, and I've also done, uh, council has, has done loan guarantees. And here's a list of, uh, businesses that we have supported throughout the years. Includes most of the breweries that are, that are in town. It includes, uh, Christopher Sellers, Atticans Winery. And I wanted to highlight a few more, such as Pig Latin, a new restaurant that opened a few months ago. For this project, uh, the, the city was able to, um, provide a impact fee to throw and to kickstart, uh, kickstart that program. Slow &amp; Low was, uh, was at a previous council meeting where you, uh, approved the loan guarantee. And I also wanted to highlight DNS development, uh, because although, uh, the assistance was for a developer, this directly impacted two, two projects, uh, Dusable Brewing and Slow &amp; Low, um, Restaurant. And the, and you see a large number there, but that's because there was a 1.5 million loan guarantee. So as we, I was, uh, as we were creating the program, we looked at what other cities were doing. We looked at Citrus Heights, LA, San Langel, St. Andrew's Fruit, a few. Um, and so what we wanted for this brew program here in Elk Grove is to be citywide, to be for new and existing businesses. And we wanted to focus on three main target businesses, which are breweries, restaurants and wineries. The program is intended to fund up to $50,000 on a reimbursement basis or up to 50% of eligible project cost. This grant would be awarded in the form of reimbursement, as I mentioned, after the project is completed. So the eligibility, uh, is as follows. Uh, we focus on breweries, which include local and regional taprooms and brew, brew pubs with publicly accessible tasting rooms. Restaurants that are local and regional, elevated chef-driven restaurants and cafes. And wineries, uh, we also include local and regional winery and distillery facilities. And for both the wineries and, and, and breweries, we want to make sure that these have publicly accessible tasting rooms. Uh, some of the eligible, the eligible project costs and expenses include, um, equipment, tenant improvements, electrical plumbing, addition or expansion of outdoor seating and gathering areas, um, development impact fees, other permit fees and, uh, design and project management services. I did want to point out that national, um, franchises and, and, and big chains are not eligible for the program. In terms of the process, at high level, um, we would engage with the potential applicant and do what we call pre-application meeting. See if the, uh, project scope, uh, is, uh, meets the goal of the program and, and all the eligibility requirements. At that point, we would engage with the, if, if, if the project is to move forward, we would, uh, enter into an economic incentive agreement and the project could be, uh, could move forward. And once the project was, is completed, uh, the applicant submits a request for reimbursement to the city and we would reimburse that as upon, uh, the agreed amount in the agreement. In terms of fiscal impact, um, council adopted the $200,000 in the 2023, '24 budget for Measure E funds. And so this is, uh, the funds that would kickstart this program. Any future funding or funding for, uh, for years after would be subject to council approval. Again, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution establishing the brew pro- brew incentive program, the policy, program policies, guidelines and procedures, and authorize the city manager to exit, to take all actions necessary to implement and administer the program. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oops, there it is. All right, thank you for your reports. Um, at this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. Uh, no, I don't see anybody signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions, comments? I'll start to the right. Councilmember Robles?
Uh, not so much questions, but just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I am super excited about this. I think we're on, you know how everybody's always looking at Elk Grove for the future? We're already hidden in that future. It's just the present now. And we're starting to see several new restaurants opening up. Um, this is exciting because it's also enticing for other restaurants to come to Elk Grove and open up instead of having the typical chain that we've been having for several years. So thank you for the work. Thank you, uh, for the econ, um, team for definitely stepping up. And I'm excited to see what, who, I'm excited to see the restaurants who are going to be applying, for the ones who have been existing and the new ones that are becoming, that are going to be coming to Elk Grove. Um, this is going to be a game changer for us. So thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you, Ms. Yagalar, for doing the presentation tonight. I know we've been talking about doing the financial assistant grants part. And I know the big question that people would have is what would the $50,000 be used for? And how would they specify that in a, in, in their application? Uh, because obviously there's things that they would do, um, both small and large, ranging from developmental impact fees to doing, um, HVAC or improvements to the fixtures and walls and stuff. So it feels, it feels like, um, I know people will complain, some folks will complain and say $50,000 isn't enough. I think it's, I think it's, it's good. It's, it's good because, I mean, uh, as, as one friend used to tell me, I am not your bank. But at the same time, um, we need to do what we can to help, um, prospective entrepreneurs who want to do business in Elk Grove, um, and give them some sort of a leg up. Because, I mean, the, the program that this is designed for, uh, breweries, restaurants, wineries, um, all original concepts are welcome. And it's, and, and all these are done to help enhance not only the quality of life, but also our local economy. And this is not just confined to, um, the historic district or parts of district two that have been beneficiaries of it. But this is good for the city. Because as, a- as, um, as people are looking for reasons to come to Elk Grove and to come back home, so to speak, because you got a lot of Elk Grove people who have businesses throughout the county that want to come back here, this is a good way to bring people back. This is a good, this is a really good incentive and it's a good, it's a good starting point. So I really, no, thank you for, thank you for, for the, um, for the overview. This was, this was good. I'm glad it's finally getting up and running. And, um, I'll definitely be supporting this when the time comes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to echo my colleagues, um, as well. Thank you, Louis, for the presentation. And, uh, I'm, I'm just happy to see something that for our existing businesses as well as, you know, attracting new ones. We, you mentioned a lot of those by example, but, um, I'm glad to see us establish a program that would, uh, that would help our existing businesses as well, or, you know, restaurants and breweries and such. So, thank you. Happy to make a motion, uh, put on the table. Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Aguilar, I just wanted to say thank you very much. I appreciate it. Really, I think this would be a very good program, beneficial to many in the city. So with that, I guess, since I'm up next, I get to second the motion.
Very good. I have nothing new to add that my colleagues haven't stated already. Great program. Game changer for our hospitality industry. So thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is our council comments, reports and future agenda items. Start to the left here, anybody?
Thank you, Mayor. Our regional sand was canceled today, so no report. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing much. STA tomorrow. But Councilmember Brewer, you don't have to go. Alternates don't have to go this time, so, or ever, I guess. So I just...
You can go, I won't be here.
You don't have to, we only need one.
Okay.
Unless you want to go.
No.
Okay, all right.
Library, the library board is good enough for me to be in person.
Is that your report, Councilmember?
Yeah, matter of fact, yes. So we, so we met, we actually, we actually met about a week and a half ago. And we just went over some items on how the plan for libraries will look. And it was a very healthy discussion. It was an item that will benefit Elk Grove in the, in the future. And so it was, it was a good meeting. Both Vice Mayor Spies and I, we participated and they had the virtual option. And so we participated virtually, as did a lot of the board. So we were not alone.
Thank you.
We were being green.
Yes, that's, I like that. That's a good excuse. Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report, but I do just want to say, earlier this week, it was Purple Heart Day. So thank you to all the service members who have served in our country, has served our country and have served our military. Super appreciated of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any committee reports. I did take a tour yesterday of Kabota Tractor Corporation. So it was great to see the progress. They are coming along beautifully and project to meet their deadlines this fall. So looking forward to that. But it's much larger on the inside than it looks from the outside. It's quite remarkable. You can get lost in there, but it's, it was, it was great to be a part of that.
Tractors take up a lot of room.
They take up a lot of room, that's true. So it's, it's going to be exciting to see. So there was, they were hosting, I think, probably 100 people and I got to see a lot of them. So it was a, a good meeting. With that, I've got nothing else. So we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:16 PM. Thank you, everyone.